We're ready, we'll get this meeting on the Amherst school for the month of November. Thanksgiving, we'll get started tonight at six oh two, apologize for the late start as we get underway tonight for our November meeting, we will open things up, of course, with public comment, we do have ability to take virtual public comments again, so as we do that, I will just read through the protocol rules we have for virtual public comment, you're joining us on Zoom. We will give priority to members of the community that are in attendance tonight that wish to speak. You'll have three minutes whether you're in person or you're virtual. Once we get through all the in-person guests, we'll go to the virtual audience, if you are virtual and you'd like to speak tonight during public comment. A couple of things you'll need to do, you'll need to raise your virtual hand, enter your full name into your avatar or your profile. When you're speaking, we ask that you turn your camera on and then say your full name and your town of residence. And then as we will begin the three-minute timer, so we have a good audience here tonight in-house. So I will open it up for the first person that would like to venture the microphone to take the first three minutes of the evening. I think that mic is not on Larry, so you may have to move it over, there's gonna be a, oh, there you go. There should be a round button towards the back, get a hold of that. When the colors are all lit up, it should be green and that interview should be live, ready to go. Nice, we're good.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Larry Ballard, I'm a music teacher in my twenty-seventh year teaching twenty-five of those years in Amherst Middle School. I'm also the parent of students at Clark Wilkins and Amherst Middle School, Walt Sadie. Today, your teachers at Clark Wilkins and AMS have now been without a contract for one hundred and forty days. To get right to the point, many of your teachers do not feel respected by our employer. If you want your teachers to feel respected, management needs to listen when we raise concerns about unsafe conditions at our school. Not ignore those concerns to the point where your unions feel the only recourse left is to call New Hampshire Department of Labor. Which has led to this district being cited for non-compliance with state safety requirements. A teacher's work environment is also a student's learning product. And it's incredibly frustrating for us when this school district continues to push back against teacher efforts to improve safety. Especially when those requests are based on state requirements or written recommendations that were made to this district by the New Hampshire Department of Labor. Over the past few years, teachers have put in an unprecedented amount of effort. During the pandemic, we kept our schools open five days a week, significantly more than neighboring communities. We simultaneously offered remote instruction to any family who worked. And those classes were taught by Amherst teachers, keeping Amherst students connected to their own school and their community. Teachers contributed ideas and worked together to help solve challenges. We learned new skills, we rolled up our sleeves to get to work with an all-hands-on-deck mindset for the benefit of our students and this community. Yet the official position of the former superintendent of the administration was that they could have planned and implemented those twenty-twenty-one pandemic-related changes all by themselves with no input from teachers. Perhaps more appropriate response from our employer might have been, thank you. It's any wonder your teachers don't feel respected. Teachers should not have to show up to a school board meeting to beg for fair wages and safe working conditions. If the board wants to say thank you, the school board can start by offering Amherst teachers the respect we have earned, the fair contract you deserve.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to the panel. Ms. Bruchin, when you're ready.
Ellen Bruchin, Amherst, um, so the first thing I want to do is thank you all, all, for your long hours, your long meetings, your long minutes. Um, especially during such a season. So this year, you really have your work cut out for you. Um, the ways and means through that support the Amherst school different budget has gone way off course. I am appalled and very concerned. And I was able to attend their meeting the other night and have read and try to digest the thirty-page reports. Um, and I want you all to be aware that at their meeting, if you haven't seen the minutes, they may not be supposed to get or you weren't dialed in or present. Um, Jeff Candito thankfully finally brought up the fact that the ways and means have had the budget for a month and have not discussed it. Now, I've been on the school board, I've been on Ways and Means, they're way behind. But what was more concerning was when Jeff asked to take the temperature in the room on the current question. And one person said they would support it. One person also said that if it goes above three percent, you know, report it. So you have your work cut out for you because you guys have your role in my new sand. I know the relationship with Ways and Means is complicated, especially with AMC, but it is time for you guys as elected officials, not appointed, elected officials to do the right thing by the Amherst school district. And then maybe to disregard what's happening with Ways and Means right now. And focus your energy on the school budget, on a very exciting school project we have around the corner. And also, I really, and it's not because they're all sitting in here, I had it getting my speech to keep on through. Please do not nickel and dime. We have been doing this in Amherst for as long as I have been involved, it's exhausting, it's embarrassing, it's appalling. That every year we're fighting in our budgets to get one more teacher. Um, it's funny, I gave my husband the, sorry, the Ways and Means report, he said, well, I guess we need more money. Yeah, that would be one conclusion, it's not the conclusion I think they're hoping for, but it's concerning. So, um, let's stop screwing around, let's start supporting schools in Amherst. Um, I think we forget very quickly that nationwide, our schools became by the way important, essential, and really proved that they are the care for our students for the vast majority of their days.
I have just three minutes, just so I can get out of the recent.
So, um, I'm just here to cheerlead. I mean, I forgot the negative meeting I went to the other night, we're gonna surround you guys by people who are gonna support you. I'm not gonna hold comms, but some people might. So I'd like you to focus on that and reach out if you need any help.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Christopher, I'm the Amherst, I teach third grade and I have done a few reports under Black, for which are, I welcome. Um, one of the main reasons families moving to Amherst is due to the reputation of our school. Um, to be clear, they do not move here seeking out fifty-year-old buildings with leaky roofs, broken shacks and safety issues. They move here for what happens inside the walls of schools. For the kind of education that your dedicated, hard-working teachers strive to offer our students. Uh, many teachers who come to Amherst often spend much of our careers here. Our employer makes investment in us in terms of time, training and wages. But teachers also make investment in the Amherst. We invest our time and effort into the community, building connections and relationships with our students and their families. Also, many of us also have to vote with confidence in our school system by moving our families here. Evening the connection between schools and the community. After my first year of teaching here, I went to, um, move my family to town due to the confidence in the school system. Within the past year, you have already lost several talented educators, something that typically does not happen in Amherst. Some choose early, chose early retirement or left for other school districts. Because they were not treated like valued professionals. While some younger teachers left districts that offered proper salaries at placement or had a higher salary scale. And with those teachers left years and years of training and experience. And all of the investments in the communities, in the communities that those teachers made over the years. This fall, the board has heard reports from the interim superintendent about the rising cost of every chicken nugget, grass seed. Uh, why should teachers, the children's families are feeling the same cost pressures in our household? Be ones to absorb the bulk of the cost increases for our employer and face wage penalties of reduced, of reduced earnings. If Amherst school district wants to keep the ability to attract, develop and retain quality educators who share commitment that's learned in teaching, you need to invest in your workforce. You need to treat teachers like a respected member of the team, you need to listen to and value the teacher's input and you need to hear teachers' voice.
Thank you. Anyone else in person?
Hello, I'm Karen Abad, I had to bring something, but it's fine.
You don't need to, the name is excellent, it gives you notes, but we always appreciate it if you have it, so it saves us some typing, but it's a lot of money tonight. Now, we'll restart your three minutes.
Thank you, I won't take that long. Um, I've been a teacher, moved here nineteen ninety-two. All four of my kids went through the Amherst schools. Um, I decided I'm a second career person. Um, I did not start out as a teacher, but I've been teaching subbing in Amherst public for twenty-plus years. And plan to retire this June, supposed to vote on it tonight, um. I worry about losing good teachers, I really do. Um, the younger teachers are not gonna stay, they can't afford to. And there's a lot of good young teachers, um, at the middle school, who are the teaching. I hate to see them leave, they, they can't afford it. And I know we have to worry about taxes, I get that, is, I will be a retired person too. But I'm willing to pay that increase so we can keep quality teachers. Amherst was an Amherst school, you know, recognized for excellence. Can't be a school with excellence if you don't have excellent teachers. And that's my biggest fear of losing great teachers, and I lost some last year, and I can guarantee we don't have some decent living wage for teachers, you're gonna lose a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to actually, I thought I wasn't actually gonna speak today at all. Um, but I just wanted to echo Alan's comments up here, um, I have also been going to Ways and Means for the last few meetings. Um, I have followed a little bit more over COVID, hadn't really done that in the past. I actually have always had confidence in what was going on here and at Ways and Means. And I have to say, I was one of those people that blindly just read the voter guide and voted how Ways and Means did. I don't think I can do that right now, I'm very, very concerned. Um, I sat through the last few meetings and am extremely concerned as a teacher, a taxpayer and a parent. Um, I feel that conversations that happens there, and first of all, the conversations are no longer public unless you go to them. So I anxiously waited minutes for the last couple of months. Um, looking to, to hear more of the conversation, more details, when I, when they were finally posted the other day from August. Um, they were half a page long with a sentence or two, really not much more than uh, the agenda with maybe turned into the sentence or two summary of the conversation, no details, no conversation, nothing about who said what or anything like that, so I'm very afraid that we have sort of rested our laurels for a while and just followed, and I think it's time that we need to be a little more close and watch what's actually going on. I heard a lot of conversation that was misinformation. Um, there's no history there on things, there were comments made about the contract that I know because they were contracts that I've negotiated in the past. And they were arbitrarily, oh, I think it was this, oh, I think it was that, no. We need the history, there has to be more than that than someone blindly reading something and guessing why, we all know what assumptions do. So I just want to say that I think we need to be more visible, more transparent and get out there and have conversations about the things that are happening at Ways and Means and how the community truly have input.
Thank you. Anyone else in person tonight? Okay, so we will open it up to our Zoom audience, we have a few attendees that are listening in tonight, if you'd like to speak, we just ask that you raise your virtual hands. Uh, I see full names in the profiles already. If anybody would like to speak after you raise your hand, we'll bring you in as a panelist, I'd like you to introduce yourself, turn your camera on, and then we can go from there. But as we sit here, I don't see anybody raising their hands. So with that, I will wait one more second and we'll go on. So we'll have another public comment at the end of the evening as well after we get through our vegetarian talks, uh, but for now, I will turn the floor over to Superintendent Christine Landwell, one of the board's goals this year was for more, I don't think the word is transparency, more curriculum, but I'll, I'll use it for lack of a better word. Uh, curriculum transparency, better progress, getting reports throughout the year, some of the, the major initiatives that we have going on curriculum-wise, math is obviously a big one. Uh, but with that program being so new, we thought that we'd focus tonight on English and ELA. Uh, and so I will turn it over to you, Christine, to take us through, um, the presentation you have for us.
Yeah, um, and certainly, uh, to free tonight, but happy to, uh, welcome in questions as well. Um, Kathleen and I worked to, uh, to make a few little things updates to our K-4 ELA curriculum, this is a curriculum going forward to you tonight for reapproval, they're not significant changes from previous years. Um, and this is our curriculum that is FAU-wide, so we're really just looking to capture what we're currently doing. Um, and update the format a little bit, make it a little more user-friendly than what we currently have on our website. So, um, the K-4 ELA curriculum, that's our new line of run curriculum, which includes both, um, reading and writing as well as our foundational skills for reading with this finance and beginning of awareness. And really, our emphasis that they need to have is really on those foundational skills and building deep understanding in those foundational skills, including finance and beginning of awareness. Um, then really looking at developing skilled readers and critical thinkers and skilled writers. So our curriculum really encompasses that and you'll see how as we moved from kindergarten through fourth grade, the focus shifts a little from foundational skills more deeply into, um, reading and writing, so we're really making that transition from learning to read to reading to learn. And you'll see that with the emphasis, um, a little bit on our time. And we do use a, uh, reading workshop approach and writing workshop approach, and that's really, um, uh, truly meant to build students' identities as readers and as writers. Which we think is, uh, very important, so not just having that, those foundational skills and learning the skills of reading and of writing, but really truly becoming passionate and enjoying reading and enjoying writers and being true readers and writers. Um, during that workshop time, their teacher always has a mini lesson and then they move into, um, really a, a workshop approach where students might be working independently, they might be working with partners and teachers are often pulled in small groups or maybe even, um, in bar and one-on-one with a student during that time. So it's a mix of both whole group as well as small group targeted instruction and students have that opportunity to read books at their level, at their independent reading levels. Um, and working on pretty explicit skills as the teacher ranks or relates for full small groups. And, um, you know, really, uh, as the teacher is pulling those small groups, they're really targeting individual or small group, um, uh, really where their needs are in reading, we know that there's always a range, um, in any classroom and that, you know, of, of both readers and writers and really just, uh, meeting students where they are and moving them along. Uh, is really what our, uh, teachers are able to do with our students and with this approach. Um, so, uh, again, that small group instruction in the lower levels, uh, grade level, like in the first grade and even into second grade. You're gonna see that small group instruction is gonna be a little bit more on the finance and beginning of awareness side. Whereas you move up in the grade levels, it's gonna be a little bit more targeted than, uh, certain, uh, reading strategies, for example, or, uh, writing strategies during that writing workshop time. And, uh, we also do have reading specialists at, um, our Wilkins and they're there to support small group instruction. Um, they are also really key leaders in literacy in our schools, they're there to model and support teachers with literacy. Um, and just pull, um, small groups and to provide more, uh, support for students that are needed. Um, but really, uh, we're lucky enough to have reading specialists who truly can be those literacy leaders in, in the school and support and provide that professional development, that's the goal of our, our teachers. Um, so Kathleen, I know you're really overseeing the K-4 level, if there's anything I missed or anything else you'd love to share about our overall name.
Sure, so I would, um, just echo what Christine said, we're not moving our curriculum as, as sizable teams, it's the curriculum and did you make that we kind of had for a wave a while and then we've, um, you know, brought them forward to the board for, well, with some minors, she did. Over the recent, over the last couple of years, one of those changes might include in, um, third grade, and we talked a little bit about this, I think during budget time last year. Um, in foundations, uh, that's our, uh, finance program, the, the units were really, um, really challenging and we would often come across patterns in years where uh, students and teachers weren't able to finish all the units, so we had a great discussion at the team and said, you know, what really is best is if we break this apart and we expand this up to fourth grade, so um, you know, you'll notice in this updated scope and sequence, there are units that are in fourth grade now that in the past, they would have been like, hey, maybe we could get to use um, in third grade and this is more the reality and of course, there, it's always been a very, uh, when we're using a program such a foundations, it builds skills mastery, so we ask teachers to make sure that classes are hitting, you know, eighty percent before we're really moving on and we're providing time for review, so we frequently have to amend the scope and space based off of the students in front of us. Um, another piece that we added, which is based on, um, some information over the last couple of years, is truly, um, calling out explicitly that tier one the name of awareness program, which is the Haggerty instruction, all auditory instruction for students on those beginning of knowledge will learn skills. Um, that was something that we noticed in second, third, fourth grade, that students struggled with later. And we said, hey, I think what we might be able to do rather than it becoming an intervention, um, is provide more instruction at a tier one level and K-1, so all of the K-1 teachers that implement that in their classrooms, it's about, you know, every five to ten minutes each day, um, lots of cool hand motions really engaging for the students, they they chomp, they crunch, they, um, they do roller coasters, um, and you know, that was something that isn't on here, you know, that you'll see in the K-1 level as a, as a called-out scope instrument as a result of that. Um, and you know, of course, we, you know, like Christine said, we adapt and what students need, so in some years, second grade teachers may be using some of those materials to you know, meet the needs of students in small groups and some years they may not need those materials, depends on the student in the class, um, that they're working on.
The curriculum is part of the consent agenda, so I just wanted to call out that it is in there. Um, and the nice thing with this updated format, um, we think it's a little more user-friendly for families or community to really view that as one of our goals in really taking this year-long effort um, to review and to update our, uh, all of our curriculum documents. Um, and, uh, you know, with that, you know, happy to answer any specific questions about that prior to, um, approval, but we're excited that each month we'll be able to bring you a new content area, um, we might do K-8 for some, um, you know, that, uh, but we felt K-4, this is a pretty important piece, our literacy, and we wanted to give it a time just to that K-4 piece to share the work we've done over the past few years, what our curriculum is like and then be able to present that.
Okay, opening up for questions to the board, or from the board, I should say.
Not one of the people that I can talk to. Okay. Usually only have the one that works well. Um, first off, thank you, I know that there's been quite a bit of, uh, interest in being able to see this in a very usable format. And so, um, I really like what you landed on, thank you, and I know that we're gonna be providing it on the website and printed as well, yes. Right, thank you, because I know that that's been an absolute request, um, because as digital as we have all become. Some people still prefer having it in hand. And I really love hearing the, the modification that you make, that it has some flexibility in it to really have each class say, okay, what's what's gonna connect with this class, what do they need, where do we need to fill in those blanks and, and having some movement in there and having some creative approaches to it, because I think that um, you know, reading is fundamental, it's just a phrase, like it really is, you can't learn if you can't exactly what you said, if you don't go from, from reading to actually reading to understand and to learn and it's, it's just nothing else works like it should if you don't have that, so focusing on it, especially in the early years, um, I think is absolutely appropriate. And I thank you for all the teachers who I know that even if reading isn't your specialty, it's part of what you include and what you're really paying attention to and what you're getting creative with. Because I agree with you, um, I say it all the time, a school is just a building, so you have to fill it with the people that are there with our learners and it, you are such an essential part of all that we do and I know that it can, um, not feel that way sometimes. And I haven't had many talks, lots, and we don't love it either, but, um, but we could not do what we do for our, for our kids without you and you're so appreciated.
Sarah, Josh?
Thank you, so I had a chance to sit in on the PD meeting today, I'm curious if there's any focus, uh, PD for literacy in the coming months, years.
Yeah, um, so first of all, this summer, I need our new teachers, um, Kathleen actually led the professional development this summer um, in our literacy curriculum and in, um, you know, we had the, our, our deep math work, so uh, our brand new teachers who were joining, they were able to, um, jump right into math, but, um, for ELA, um, we were really relying on Kathleen and, uh, her expertise in this area. It's really for work training with, um, reading, writing workshop. Um, so our brand new teachers received that training, um, and then they also had time for some training in both Haggerty, if they pop K-1, um, and, uh, foundations as well for our, um, any of our uh, new teachers, because foundations have helped me share this K-4, so our focus really with literacy was really on our brand new teachers, because this is a lot to juggle and Terry, as you said, it's our teachers that bring this to life, like we can put it on paper uh, but it's really our teachers day-to-day who are looking at, you know, they, they have access to all of our materials for each of these units, but it's really bringing them to life and being able to flexibly support each of our individual students, um, in, in developing this reading and writing skills. Um, as far as, um, professional development, we've done a little bit of professional development more during grade level meeting time, I would say this year, so I'll let Kathleen talk a little bit about that and it's been a little more targeted for, um, interventions and support.
I'm happy to kind of talk a little bit too and it kind of relates to something I noted in the principal's report and, uh, talked with our team, um, teacher leadership team event about yesterday, we're looking to sort over some of our staff meeting time and use it for more professional development time, um, in the upcoming months and trying to really start it, because each grade level, I mean, teacher has a different level of you know, it's not the blinded PD that's going to, um, you know, match the need of every teacher at their grade level, so you know, right now we're collecting feedback from staff about which type of topics might you be interested in exploring in a virtual learning group together over those three staff meeting. I have reading specialists who have reached out to me saying, hey, I would really love to pull first grade teachers, looking at a couple chunks at a time, you know, maybe two teachers at a time, and we wanna talk through the students and the data and what might be an approach for small group instructions, I agree with you to that in a full grade level meeting, you know, um, a couple of, I think it was about a month ago. It really varies on the teachers and their needs and then, you know, I try to be responsive about that kind of, also ensuring that the baseline, our new staff are provided with, you know, that onboarding training of an understanding of the approaches of the, the resources that we're using. And then who are their people, right, so they have their mentors to help them, they have their grade level colleagues and our reading specialists, um, truly are experts and, um, we rely upon them often as a help for our whole community.
Thank you, anyone else? Lauren?
Um, Christine, can you talk about maybe a plan that we have to look at different curriculums over time or how we decide what we're looking at?
Yeah, so, um, I met with, um, Kathleen and with Kristen and we really looked at um, where are we with our curriculum documents for each of our content areas of what makes the most time, how much time do we need? Um, there are a few areas where we're probably going to present them later on in this year, just because we have a little bit more work to do in those areas, so we do have kind of a plan and a, a sketch for the remainder of the, um, year and each board meeting, we will be presenting, um, one curriculum area at each board meeting. I have it written down somewhere, but not, no, no. Oh, yeah, sorry, um, we do have a whole five-year curriculum review cycle, so every year we typically focus on one major content area to do a deeper, more programmatic review. Um, we've had to adjust that a little bit due to COVID and certainly our math work, um, we adjusted to make sure it fit in with our teachers. Um, you know, needs, but there was a stronger need at the, um, elementary level for math material because at the, you know, middle school level, our math teachers are really content experts and many of our elementary teachers are deeply trained in math as well, but being, um, teaching just math often, you know, you feel that you have the ability to grab and pull some of those resources and supplement, where we felt that at the elementary level, since we had drifted so far um, from our, um, you know, our textbooks weren't necessarily aligned to Common Core and the supplementing we were doing, we felt that uh, kids may be getting different experiences in different classrooms, we really accelerated, uh, our math process to make sure that we had those high-quality, standard-aligned materials in our elementary and then that's been up to our middle school level. Um, we did have to adjust a little bit due to COVID, so we kind of pushed off some of our review, um, and, you know, certainly, we can update that and present that through review cycle again, uh, that maybe more with our, our COVID adjustments.
Sure, I heard that Kathleen's talking about, um, team time, talking about staff meeting time, we got late starts. Um, I, time is a currency of school improvement, it's so precious, have to use every moment, and this year we did do some, um, we're also doing some security training, some of our late starts, so and there's a lot of draws and a lot of buries on our time, professional element counter, and it's, like, time's so essential. Eric?
Okay, first off, thank you for breaking it up so we can go a little deeper, um getting it, you know, every month instead of saying, here's a whole dump of wow. I appreciate that. Um second, I want to make sure that our um, I know that our core subjects are very much the focus and it needs to be. But how about our arts? And I know we have an expanding some of our choices, especially for those school. And so um are we looking at those in a holistic way as well? And what's the plan for those? And I think I have another question, but I'll leave you to answer those first.
Okay, um yes, we are planning on bringing our specials, um our unified arts curriculum to the school board. If that's probably one, that's going to be a little bit later. Um in our new year, we did spend um a pretty significant amount of our in-service day, especially in fifth grade, eighth grade, our October in-service day, working on curriculum and just making. Some of those updates, really having that opportunity for our teachers to review what is in print, um what adjustments or recommendations or changes would you make? Um and the specialists, um you know, that's certainly an area um in, as you mentioned, in the middle school, we do have. Um we really expanded out opportunities for students and we have a lot of electives. So some of the electives that are in year one, we might still be putting conditioning touches on those. We might not have them by the time we present, but certainly will. Um you know, button those up over the summer and be able to uh present any of our newer electives, um if we're not yet able to finish that this year. Can I do a follow up?
Okay, so um with PD and thank you again, Josh, for taking over my spot this year, because I had a lot of scheduling conflicts and it really needs a dedicated person to be there. And so I'm very jealous that he's taken my spot, but I appreciate that he's able to offer that consistency. Um are we offering because time is is? The time that they're able to be live and together in demand that we have so many things to do. Are we having more resources that teachers can get to on their own time? That we give recommended things that they can um do digitally, that they can do. I mean, we have B labs for kids, we have other things for kids. Do we have? Some of those in an organized way for our teachers?
As far as professional development?
Yes. And we expanded some of the offerings for them so they can um, you know, in their copious.
I think choose to. Usually during our structured time, we try to be live and we've actually, you know, o- often break our PD up into smaller sessions when we can, you know. Something we did at AMS this year, we have different strands and teachers chose what strand they wanted to join. And we have multiple small groups working on different topics. Um so, you know, some people may have chose um. Uh you know, uh to dive deeply into data or others may be looking at responsive classroom or or social emotional learning. Uh so uh teachers have been able to, you know, with professional development, as Kathleen said, are one of our goals has really been. Provide teachers with choice for professional development um and and, you know, when we're all together to offer um, you know, different options for teachers. Um the uh in-service day this year, we did have online options for teachers. They could choose either in person or online or a combination of both. And some of the teachers did come to me after and said, you know, I love that. I really want to do more of, you know, can I do more of those online pieces? So there are some teachers who are interested in doing some of that and we're giving some of that even into our late start time based on that feedback from in-service days. We kind of have a combination. Uh but we also want to be careful. I know we've gotten feedback from teachers as well that. Online learning for them personally doesn't work, so to have the option of both has been really great. Um we do, we're actually talking about it at our PD committee meeting today. We do have a PD Slack channel that people are, you know, teachers can join. And we do update with um, you know, different options for professional development on that channel and they are usually, you know, very. Um what we share, you know, any high quality professional development that's shared with us, we then share it with the teachers so they have that option.
Is there like a central page maybe? Because I know Slack channel is great, but it can be kind of overwhelming and you've got to scroll through. Is there just a way to kind of capture some of those in one spot? So it can be a little easier to find?
We haven't really often um, and and that's certainly something the PD committee could, you know, take up um. Uh to provide some feedback on and what might be that best format. Uh with Slacks, since often uh PD opportunities are timely, right? Like we'll get the advertisement and it's at this time and on this date. And yes, maybe you can register and lock it later. Uh but Slack has seemed to work okay, just because we want to get it out quickly and it is timely and everyone gets that message. Hey, there's another PD opportunity posted to Slack and then it usually kind of expires and might travel a while around the page and you don't release it again. So. Um that's certainly good, you know, feedback for us to get from the PD committee, how well that is working for communicating PD opportunities. So thank you.
There is a culture of teacher sharing quality with everybody else.
Yeah, oh yeah, anyone?
I pick up a lot of professional development, professional management, sir.
Yeah, it's nice to have options. That's all. Yeah. Nice to have. Thanks.
Anybody else? I'll be real quick.
This one's working.
Um first, thank you for putting all all of this um together. Uh I don't know. I guess I'm going to get to one question, but I just have comments first. Uh one being, and I'm coming from the middle school perspective, so keep that in mind. Uh I am a big fan of foundations and I love that the district is focusing focusing on phonics, right? That is what research says to do right now. And not everyone's doing that, so I think it's important to know that the district is following what the research says to do in terms of uh reading instruction. Which is, right? Because it was the whole language. People don't know. There was like this whole language movement, which was a train wreck and then now train is back. And so I just wanted to be clear, like, thank you for focusing on foundations. I love foundations. I think Wilson as a whole program is fantastic, cool, full reading. Um I also really appreciate that even though Christine, I think you said like this less of a focus on phonics as they get older. But looking at the um scope and sequence, whatever you want to call it. Um in the fourth grade, there's still some like focused on very specific syllable sounds, LE and control R and all of that stuff is. So appropriate at that time. So I think it's important that people again realize that this is really a thought out research plan. Um so this leads me to my question, which is going to want to counter to everything that I just.
But that's sad.
Um and and that is my only concern, and this is a broader concern, so this might not be solely literacy literacy concern. Is are we just making sure that we're not just pounding academics and we are considering a holistic picture of of the student? You know, are we giving these kindergartners? Because there's also tons of research out there, especially by uh Posse Solberg about unstructured time. For young ones, because that's where they develop their critical thinking skills, which you mentioned, that's where they develop their, so. Because I know we're talking about literacy so, but I just want to make sure that we're also keeping in mind that there is a full child.
Yeah, and this is really just that literacy piece. Um one thing, um you know, in planning a lot of our um. Focus this year on responsive classroom, uh we, you know, we shared that with the PD committee and started talking to the teachers about it and teachers said to us. That's great, but our our scope and sequence needs to reflect that. The first six weeks of school, we need to be following responsive classroom. We need to be really spending the first six weeks doing what we're supposed to be doing during that time for responsive classroom. So you'll notice in kindergarten, we don't even start a formal literacy um or I should say reading or writing unit. We don't even start our formal um uh reading until October, because September is really about um supporting our kindergartners and transitioning to school. And being able to be students and have that time. So really the formal literacy instruction is really on those foundational skills. In the beginning of the year in kindergarten, we feel is really important. We also made sure that. The way we structured our units and the other grade levels, that there was still time during those first six weeks. So um our uh literacy unit, I'm just scrolling through our straight, very give you a specific example. Um our teachers start in September with um some lessons on really launching their uh reading workshop time. And that launch, those activities been seamlessly in, you know, those first six weeks and how you build a classroom culture and find it and how you set up procedures and. And expectations for students. So we tried to build that in while it might um, you know, not look like that from the paper. Um we did make that really explicit with our teachers and you know, you'll notice that it's building good reading habits in the launch. We have two full months to do that. So really they they start with that launch and the the procedures and and those pieces of really diving to. Really more of the heavier, slightly heavier academics, we still use students in. And even in first grade. We don't start um our more formal writing instruction until November. And again, that's intentional where we're starting, you know, starting heavier on the foundational skills and then slowly building in some of those other academics. Um and I I know I think we do also have a a, you know, play-based learning time in kindergarten. We are required to have a a play-based program and we do. Um our kindergarten teachers have a whole hour for play-based learning every day for our students. And, you know, we've heard from teachers that during that unstructured time is sometimes when some of the deepness learning is happening. It's when they're actually able to apply their learning and learn, you know, from each other and on their own. Um and our teachers have done a wonderful job really developing that play-based learning. I'm, and I was just meeting with new teachers today who said, oh, I'd love to dive more into, you know, that that play-based learning and and maybe that will be one of my goals, because I really want. Um to to support students even more during that time. So I don't have anything to do with anything else, so.
No, I would just, I would just add, um, you know, we're always looking to try to make sure that we're supporting our students in front of us, right? So it, of course, it looks one by one paper, but the reality is maybe different. We stop with the classroom based off of the student. So it's. It's written conversations of how is this going, how are we continuing to do this, what are we going to do, right? It could look like for one group, it's one class and that foundation commitment, right? It might double the amount of time students need more time to master those explicit skills. Which you're right, we value, right? We really value that. So we're going to slow it down, but that's going to impact the paper for the year. Um and I think, you know, it looks like, okay, you know, we're doing all this at this time, but there could be shifts and adjustments that are needed. And then when those happen more frequently, like that situation we had in third grade, hey, we're noticing this is a pattern. Over the last couple of years, let's have a conversation of moving some of these units to grade four, right? So it seems like we're not getting so confident, LE, you know, uh when we when we want to get there. Um so that syllable type is important, so we need to figure out how to put it somewhere else. Um so so which is ongoing to continue with with teachers and teams.
I, so my my last question on this, my first question, but which I think will be our last comment on this, if the board approves, is. Not something we need to think about tonight, but I assume that we'll touch on this again later in the year, the ELA components of it, and I hope that we do and it can be part of the rotation. Because of the importance that it uh that it has for a child's education, but. I hope that we have a way to track progress, not only the changes that we've made, but student progress. We're investing a lot of time in the professional development side. But schools for kids mostly, so we want to make sure that all of that is coming back together and actually, you know, advancing progress and making a difference from what we've done in the past. So. I would just ask, however, we're going to be tracking that if we can get an update on that, like, or really helpful, so.
And we have multiple data points, but um it's not happy to share.
I figured, dude, I just don't have a perfect spot and I can have her come up and have school, so. All right, so. I do as well, so that's, but I don't want to be very clear with that, so. Uh before we go to consent agenda, I will turn it over to Steve if he has some high points, if he wants to talk about the superintendent's report, because. We will vote on the consent agenda, which includes principals reports. We can talk about that with them. And then it also includes the changes to the curriculum and the uh, you know, allowing that curriculum to be put in the the binder that we now have. So. Uh Steve, I will turn it over to you and then you can shift consent agenda after that.
No, I'm very comfortable um with the consent agenda and the pieces. We'll take a, we'll take it a little bit on hiring a little bit. Um but hopefully the board notes gave the background necessary for the meeting. If you have any questions on that, but. No, I'm very, very comfortable depending on you, the consent agenda. Any questions for Steve directly on that? Yeah.
There were notes to mention, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, Steve has done a a great job communicating with the board with the superintendent's notes, so those are always in the uh in the agenda or in the. Uh minutes from the following meeting, the building, the agendas as well. So if you go back, you can get a good recap of uh what's going on in uh with Steve's report. In addition to the Wednesday videos, which I had watched, thanks.
I didn't watch that, it came out Thursday, right?
It did. It came out Thursday.
Well, I'm talking about your stick.
Well, I did it yesterday, but no sound. And as we saw, the plug and things that are.
Yeah, I was surprised. My daughter says I was struggling last night.
All right. Um so with that, I will take a motion to uh open up the consent agenda for approval, uh and then we can get into a conversation about those particular items we have.
I'll make a motion.
And a motion for Victoria, second? Second, okay? So with that, we will open up discussion on the consent agenda items. We don't have to be as formal to go through every single item. Uh but I would suggest that uh for their time, if we start off with the principals, uh Kristen Goff here from AMS and then Kathleen Murphy from. Barb Wilkins, if you want to focus on their contributions first, that way they don't stick around as long as we do tonight. Any questions, any points, anything the principals would like to provide or add color to that was in the report? Eric?
Yeah, I knew it was going to happen. All right. So if we're talking AMS first, you're Eagle Store fundraiser. I don't know how you finally cracked the code. But um thank you for working so nicely with PTA and really finding things that connected with families and kids. Because I, in my time in this district, I don't think I've ever seen such a successful um drive at AMS. And it's so great to let those kids still feel engaged and like they're really supporting their school. And and it gives you the ability to do some things you wouldn't otherwise be able to do. And so thank you for really working so well on that. I'm so excited for you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I get a lot of the credit. Uh PTA was an enormous sport. Um they did an enormous amount of planning. Uh it's not easy to find last minute hot chocolate for six hundred and thirty people. Um and to to brainstorm some of the motivating things, I think was the the creative part and I think it'll be even bigger and better next year. Um in talking, um I'm getting excited about talking with um Katie Fantasia, our PTA president, about. You know, what the possibilities are in terms of looking at our classrooms and um some of the fun um, you know, artwork we could possibly do on the Jersey barriers that we have that line our playground. And some of the artists in residence. Sorry. Into New Jersey. Um I'm not used to that. Uh yeah, no, so it was that we're looking at some really fun things and my goal is for kids to see they'll get in place this year. Um so that they can get excited about fundraising in the future. I think one of the other pieces is that. We tried to uh incentivize teachers a little bit, right? We wanted to, I said, I want to make sure I give them free lunch and participate. So we were able to get some lunch for some teachers. Uh which I really liked, because that was more gave me and the teacher a fun time. Um and it made me really want to work hard for it, but even the kids just getting registration, even if they couldn't contribute money or didn't feel comfortable asking money, just. The ability to participate, sign up on the website, counted as a registration and so they were for that. So. Um I think we raised, um you know, we weren't too far off last year with the booster long, but the the difference was um we did a lot more of it on our own, which meant we got to love people a lot more of it. Um our cup was bigger, so it's pretty exciting and I think we can go even bigger next year.
Just on the total other end of the spectrum, suicide prevention training. They have to bring the mood down. Um it's such an important thing and I know that um over the years, Kim Webberney's been such a champion to really make sure that teachers. Um that all of them, because they're the ones who are closest to kids every day, right? You can't just have it be guidance. It can't just be, I mean, I know that we've advanced advisory, but even that, it really has to be every single staff member, because um. We have such a great program to have a caring adult for every child, but to have every adult have that same framework and to know, okay. I'm noticing this, are you noticing this? And they go to the caring doll who's really the one who has been identified for that and are able to. To have these as things that are top of mind and I think it's just so essential. So thank you for taking the time and really focusing and. Um if Kim is listening, thank you for continuing to be such a superstar in this area and really sharing her knowledge out with everybody, because I think it's. It's really important. I was happy to see you on the board.
Have we had any kids get folks out of the vending machine yet?
Not yet, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So excited. Um so first, I wrote the report. We had only earned thirty nine thousand dollars. Um we actually spent forty thousand dollars um in the PTA review of the farm, which was very exciting for us to. Full community um earning all the incentives. So we're hard at work planning a few of them. One of them involves a school-wide concert with uh people sunblock for all the kids. For those six. Um and I will be camping out on the playground on Thursday, December. So planning it out ahead of time, all these closing feedback from kids, asking them to give you advice. And here from lots of my staff who have already told me, they will help me out there. Um so it's going to be very exciting on that. The book vending machine has arrived. Um we're so excited. Teacher leadership met yesterday. This is kind of playing out like how are we going to pass out these gold coins? Or we want it to be really meaningful, something super exciting for kids. Um and you know, our feeling was that it would be above and beyond behavior, above and beyond perseverance, whether that means. It was something that they did, you know, super kind with a friend or they 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 met a challenge and they overcame that challenge or they persevered through something academically and showed lots of growth. We want all staff to be able to help give out those gold coins and then our goal is to track that so we can ensure that every kid. Gets a book um each year from the book vending machine. So logistically, we've started to work that out, hoping to get gold coins out in hands um to teachers right after. Thanks for embracing kind of our plans of keeping track. Uh our Clark team also brainstormed last year. You may remember, we started like that, uh Rich, the Wilkins, so each uh month, the Clark students came over once a month. So our Clark team are thinking each month they'll grab like a third of their class and. So our Clark team are thinking each month they'll grab like a third of their class and a third of their class will be able to go to the book vending machine. Um, each time they come over to visit so that we can, um, kind of move all the things together with it. Uh, we're su- i- i- it's just exciting. We also are having, so it's going to put a new plugin for us. Because apparently it requires a lot of voltage to run this book vending machine. Um, all things we're looking at, we have very cool.
Who won the dance off?
So that is still. So I'm glad we're on the videos there.
Anybody else for the principals or any other items on the consent agenda?
Can I just add something? Um, I just want to add that the total statement for the, the Veterans Day fundraiser as well. And so we raised over two thousand dollars, um, from the community, which is great, um, especially because it kind of, uh, piggybacked off of our booster fund. The most exciting part though is that, um, I did speak with, uh, the executive director of Operation Delta Dog. Some of that money is going to go to Operation Delta Dog, some of that money is going to go to the Veterans Association. Um, we had a fabulous ceremony, um, Mr. Ballard, um, Mr. Swift, um, Ms. Urbanic, they really helped, uh, to, to make that special. Just with playing and singing and responsibility to the flag. And, and so that was really special. Um, but the, the coolest, exciting part is that the executive director, um, did tell me that what we raised is likely enough to actually be able to, um, donate to a shelter to get a dog and transport them. So AMS will sort of have a dog that we can be able to get to a better. So I think that's a real special thing. It's something that we'll be able to share with the kids, that a difference that they made. But just to have noticed that.
Yep, um, I just wanted to draw attention to the unanticipated revenue, um, that Roger Preston. There's Liberty Energies, where his team will repeat, donate him. I'm not exactly sure what it is, but, um, twenty-eight hundred dollars is wonderful and I'm glad that our SAE was, you know, paying attention to outside funding. Um, I appreciate that. Was AMS one of those? So I know that I already reached out to you directly, but I wanted to publicly, I just praise the Golden Spatula program. I have been trying forever to make it in the middle of a workday. I finally made it to a fourth grade celebration. And I have to tell you, I walked in and the lunch ladies, they're both in these beautiful golden dresses and not the lunch ladies, the lunch monitors, so the lunchroom monitors. And then the lunch ladies fed me a wonderful, um, I don't normally like sweet potato fries, but they were not bad. And so, um, I got to hang out with the collaborators and really get to experience it with them. And it's such a great way to, this particular class and had, had earned a ticket every day for a month. They had, they had really consistently met expectations and really focused on, um, what they're doing right. And I've always loved that approach of yes, you have to have expectations. Yes, you have to call out bad behavior, but really to let it be, let me catch you doing something good. Let me celebrate doing it right. And it was so wonderful. And as much as I'm so excited to have teachers here and to praise them, I really want to say that our support staff as well. Um, these ladies not only dressed in their beautiful golden dresses that day, but they told me that they shop once a week, they pick out an outfit. And every day they wear something different, but the same as each other. So the kids can pick them out easily. And especially the kids who need extra help, they don't have to worry. They just, you know, they can just donate on them and be able to support them. And I thought that was such, such an amazing kind thing for them to do. And we just are so blessed to have like this amazing set of people who care so much for our kids. And so I wanted to really call them out as such a lovely example of the lengths that our staff goes to support our kids.
Thank you very much, Terry. I completely echo it and so supportive of our staff who all have their hands in making this a special experience for students. Starting with a small idea and then I've looked into something truly incredible. Once a month, our teachers join the students that when their class ends, you know, we have teachers that created the sign for outside of each class. Kids are keeping track of their Golden Spatula tickets and, um, it's helped to, um, promote positive behaviors in our lunchroom. Which then enables students to eat their lunch, um, in a space that, you know, they're able to do it in a timely manner and enjoy it with their friends.
On the consent agenda, I'm not sure if it's going to be Steve or Amy, but item number eleven, the budget transfer. You're just going to read what that, um, in relation to what that money is going to be used as, shifting four thousand from one fund or whatever?
Sure, uh, I think I mentioned this in board notes, um, oh, sorry. I, I really, uh, appreciate, um, Kathleen's leadership on this, uh, she, uh, extensive after-school program. Uh, very much appreciate the teachers and we've had a lot of discussions with more interest in clubs. And we're still coming back, uh, you know, from COVID, the more social opportunities and construction opportunities after school we can provide. So we were able to transfer some money from an area that we didn't need into the area to expand our after-school program. It was forty-five hundred dollars and Amy, where it was coming from? P M C, which is?
Um, the P M E know. So at this point, um, we're in talking Kathleen, the after-school club program for a, a higher priority. Um, and at this point, you're not looking to do a P M E two program that potentially could change. And we have to look, um, to see if we can find possible funds for that, but after-school programs were the priority.
Great. Any other questions from the board before we move on to consent agenda?
I have one question on that, though. I know there was a waitlist for kids. Will it, will it be getting kids off the waitlist who are on the waitlist or just providing additional opportunities?
So, yeah, providing additional opportunities. So, um, we had, I think it was over fifty-six total proposals for stipends around our teaching staff and support staff to run these clubs. Um, so we had teachers doing proposals for the full year, trying to spread out the clubs and the equity amongst staff running the clubs and the variety of the clubs. Um, so, uh, we will run a lottery every season that a new club series starts. It'll be kind of fall, winter and spring. And we'll give, um, we'll give priority in the next lottery to students who didn't get a spot in the first. So, um, it, it is a lot of mathematical. Very grateful for Mr. Tori Burke, who helped me with all of this. Um, but we'll basically try to go through the bullet and say, okay, your child had an opportunity this time. So we're going to try for this next opportunity, raise it in new to their kids.
It'll be done in the Taylor's, so it's pretty safe.
Not that, but because feel that energy, feel that way, you know, I think the lottery. We got feedback from the PTA when we moved the lottery model about that equity for kids. And I think it's in a spot where at least we're able to save families, you know, it truly is as, you know, um, as, you know, random as it can be at this point, while now we'll ensure that the next round will go to kids who didn't come out in the first.
So it's not expanding and they do do a class, the club now, it's just more clubs down the road.
More clubs down the road. Yeah, so each session will have about thirteen, fifteen operates. Yeah.
Great, very cool. Yeah, it is a lot of variety to even with the different types of clubs. Alright, with that, we will vote on the consent agenda, all in favor of passing it as it is. Then it's five and none of voters, so it will pass unanimously. So moving on to our next item, it's just a, a, a quick touch upon the board goals. I'll run through this if the board has any color that they'd like to fill in, we can certainly do that. Uh, at the beginning of the year, we had five different goals and I don't know, we've done a great job of checking and periodically throughout the year on, on what progress we've made. Not to toot our own horns, if we have made progress and certainly not to hide it if we haven't, but just to keep folks, uh, up to date on what we've done and, and to hold us accountable. We had five different areas. Uh, one of those was curriculum focusing really on the new math program. But, uh, as we saw with Christine tonight and as Christine alluded to, there is a plan for presentations throughout all of our meetings this year, just to touch upon curriculum changes, curriculum, uh, initiatives that we're working on and certainly tracking the math program. So math will be the big focus coming up in December or January, uh, but I certainly appreciate Christine, um, bringing that to us tonight. And with that, we do have a curriculum binder, so if the computer's not your, your bag to look on the website. There is a curriculum binder that will have tonight's approved ELA curriculum, but all the other curriculum in a binder for you to view at the, uh, Brick School and, uh, on the village. On the greens, so if you wanted to look at it that way, that is going to be available now. And, and that to Steve and Christine's credit and Victoria, uh, with them as well, that has been probably eight months? Am I, am I being too generous there or more or less?
Probably burning out for about that long.
Yeah, so about eight months to get this ready to go, uh, so it's not just in the digital format. So, so thank you to them for that, uh, but that is now available at Brick School. Uh, ways and means, working on, uh, just having a closer relationship with them. So we're not surprised by what they come up with on election day or, uh, for their recommendations. We didn't have a ton of conversations with them in years past, so trying to do more of that this year, certainly we've done that, uh, and they're here again tonight. And we've had time for them at every meeting and we've been making a chance for a couple of liaisons to go to their meetings as well. Uh, and administration certainly has been helpful for them, providing a lot of information for the work that they've been doing and, and the reports that they've, uh, made a request on. So I certainly thank Christine and Amy for doing that and for Steve and Amy for attending the meeting that they had this week. Student behavior was a focus that we talked about at the end of last year. Uh, this will be something that we monitor very closely. There were a lot of behavioral issues that we saw coming out of COVID the last couple of years. And there's been a new approach, uh, for lack of a better term, at the middle school. So Steve and I have talked about this, uh, something for again, December or January, to see how the new initiatives with Christine, uh, uh, Kristen's leadership as well. To see how these have, have really changed. Uh, John Schutter has been working on this a lot, uh, changing the really the AMS model from a lower, uh, from one middle school to sort of a lower and upper middle school, but we'll have more on that, uh, more details for that coming in December or January as well. Community engagement, we have had, uh, a variety of, uh, what we call listening sessions, which I hate that name. And, but that's what we call them because it's, it's functional and that's what we try to do. Um, we've had a variety of those. We have had two with South Eagan at the library. And we have our next one coming out, the date to be determined, that will arrange with the South Eagan School Board, uh, but that'll be coming up after Thanksgiving. But just a chance to, to give community feedback, community engagement is something that we've really been trying to work on for years now. There's no perfect way to do it because, uh, we have a, a lack of funds to be able to communicate maybe as well as we would like with, with mailers. And I'm not sure if that's efficient anyway, certainly the Amherst citizen being online only is, is contributed to a, a lack of outlets to be able to reach people. But, um, again, folks have recommendations on how we can reach out to the community more. We'd love to take those and, and do our best to try to engage with people. Um, we have had those listening sessions and we have another one coming up again late November, early December. And then lastly, uh, hiring a superintendent, so that Steve, uh, can go back to his normal job. Um, Josh, if you want to, um, just give us a quick recap on that, and we had a meeting last week, was it? It was last week, the week before, we had a meeting in the last couple of weeks, uh, but that committee is making a lot of good progress on getting a superintendent. Um, and ideally having somebody in place early in the spring or actually late in the winter, maybe having somebody ready to go. Um, and hopefully we're beating other districts to the punch in, in this hiring process. Yeah, I can speak a little bit about that. We did get a presentation from NASDAQ. Um, alright, Ken, I don't, like you, I'm not sure how many weeks ago that was, but, uh, we got that presentation, um, that pulled from the community, uh, focus groups and survey to create candidate profile, uh, which will help guide the screening committee, which just has been officially formed. Thirteen members of the school board, administration and community, uh, will work together to, um, run through our, our candidates that we will have. Uh, which I believe the deadline for application is tomorrow. So, um, we will finalize that list and, uh, I think we were talking in our meeting the other day, it feels a little bit like Christmas. We'll get to finally look at the applications and begin digging in, uh, to that. So those meetings will happen in November, late November, uh, and from there, the screening committee will recommend three to five candidates to the S A U board. Um, and the, the process will continue, uh, from there. And like you said, uh, the goal would be to interview and potentially, uh, make an offer in middle winter. So things are progressing well there, uh, the work is going well and we look forward to really digging into the applications, uh, starting in late November. And, and I think it's worth just saying thank you to Josh for this because I know it has been a, a lot of work and a lot of meetings to go through this committee. But, uh, when it comes to hiring somebody in the school district, when you're hiring the head of a, a school district like this, it's certainly not something to take lightly. So the meeting and the times, uh, the time and the meetings will hopefully be worth it when we look back on this in February. Maybe Josh will say that, but, uh, with a number of meetings, but that is the goal is to really get this and do this thoroughly. So we have a superintendent that's in place, it aligns with community's goals, with the district's goals. And then, uh, first and foremost, what is, is best for students here in Amherst and then certainly my burning factors in that as well, so. Uh, any comments from the board on board goals, anything that I missed? Okay, uh, so before we get to facilities briefly, I did want to touch on any other subcommittees of Mel, Josh, Terry, Hillary, the su- uh, the superintendent subcommittee that he's been working on. Anybody else have any other updates that are, um, germane or any, any important information from their subcommittees, Terry?
Alright, so, uh, Steve and I actually started our day together over at the, um, our support meeting. And, um, I just think that we're very lucky to have such a really, a really wonderful regional set of services and schools. And we, we do have some of our students there who have really been thriving with that alternative environment. For, um, for those who need it, it's great to have it. And one thing that we added last, last year, the start of beginning of the school year was a curriculum, um, specialist to, to help all of our second. I think that that's already really paying off for attendance. And I think that, um, we were talking about kind of our roles as, as member districts and, and how those might change. And whether we need to update those or look at those. And so we, we may have things to report sometime this year, but that might change that relationship a little bit. But I think that, um, they're really keeping that a thriving, healthy thing. It's, it's an amazing um, set of, of programs and schools. I've been, I've really enjoyed getting to know more about them.
Uh, I want to, um, Terry, I want to get back to my superintendent report from S A U. Uh, five students, three of the academy students.
Okay, yeah, we have. That was summer.
Uh, Josh, you're nervous?
Uh, so a quick update on policy, we met today, um, continue to review some policies, we'll meet again in December. You should have a packet ready for the S A U at the December meeting. Uh, also PTA, um, as you've already heard, we had great success with our fundraisers. So, uh, PTA is excited to put that money toward out the proceeding at AMS, teacher grants and a record enrichment, as well as other things. Uh, the PTA, uh, also has recently started the teacher grant application process. The group are reviewing those. Uh, holiday story time is set for December eighth at Wilkins from six to seven thirty. And also, uh, the PTA play is coming up. And it's going to be a tilt of this year, should be a great opportunity for kids and parents and community members to get involved and sing and dance on the stage. So Tom, I know that he will be joining right into that, absolutely. Basically, I'm giving hers, I don't miss the view.
No, I mean, what I have today is not important.
I think it's important.
It's important?
But Jason thinks isn't important, we're just saying that at some point, the town and the school will be presenting the, um, C I P, which is the capital improvement plan. And the reason why Jason said it wasn't quite important is that we don't have that actual date at our fingertips quite yet. It has not been scheduled on the, um, for the selectmen side, so.
Yeah, ten to the twenty.
Tentatively the twenty. We're waiting on that.
Excuse me, anybody else? For a second, please. Okay, with that, we will move on to facilities now. So this was a, a conversation that Jason, uh, had initiated when we were going over at agenda items. And there were just a couple of different, um, priorities that we wanted to hit upon tonight. And we're certainly working on communication plans for the elementary school. But I think that that has been a big focus for us, um, naturally, when you're looking at a project that's got a fifty-four million dollar price tag on it. Uh, everything else gets sort of put off to the side, but we certainly have a middle school that we're going to be functioning out of for the, for the time being, whether we do the new elementary school or not. So one of the things that we just wanted to talk about, and Jason, I'll let, I'll turn it over to you to, to bring up where the focus was, is, but what is that plan for AMS? And so I'll turn it over to you and then we can dive into that.
Um, yeah, so I was just thinking, as, as you said, Tom, you know, we spend a lot of time on Clark Wilkins, I believe, so. Um, when we say things that we're going to have AMS watertight, I just want us to fully articulate, um, where funds would be coming from, what happened, what are the consequences planned depending on the fifty-four million dollar passes? That obviously makes it easier than vulnerable funds for AMS, what happens if it fails. Uh, but we're still going to have funds, are we getting, getting the capital reserve fund? I think we just need to fully articulate exactly what that plan question out looks like. So everybody in the community knows when they go to the polls and so we know, and so everybody knows, um, how are we making sure that students aren't displaced for two weeks at a time and receiving instruction in the hallways? And things like that. Again, I'm not trying to detract, obviously Clark Wilkins needs to happen, but I just want to make sure that, right, everyone's fully aware of where the money would be coming from and what passing the Clark Wilkins book means and what projecting contains in terms of AMS.
Sure, I can start. So, um, in the summer, uh, uh, right at the beginning of the summer, there was a, a significant time spent in discussions about the next stage. And do you continue with a, a, a two-building project? Do you, how do you adjust? And, um, what the, by, by moving fifth grade from the middle school to Clark Wilkins, that improved significant culture, climate, hallways, storage space and things like that. Um, so there was a bump there and a focus on Clark Wilkins, especially Clark Wilkins for, um, some significant issues. And again, it's, it's all been articulated really well. But what that did, when the board made the decision to say that AMS is now going, not going to be the focus of a project, it gets us out of facility purgatory. Because what happens, like in Clark Wilkins right? Because what happens like in Clark Wilkins right now, it doesn't make any sense to put money into that building. Like last year, it didn't make any sense to put money in AMS or Clark Wilkins because we were right looking at a significant renovation. And that is what happens when you're in the development of a building project, you hold. And and you you deal with leaking roofs more than you want to. And you get and you put out some things because you have to be very careful about putting right. Good money that's gonna be turned in a renovation project. So. Once the board made the decision, we could now look at substantive changes to Amherst Middle School to make it more functional. And we heard loud and clear, very appropriately from this community, that a priority is watertight. And so um we have about one point four million dollars in the capital reserve fund. We have spent in the board's uh at a previous meeting with a public hearing authorized approximately fifty thousand dollars with a construction manager as well as an architect. To develop the base. We could actually understand how much it would cost to renovate the roof. And how much it would cost to take a look at our unit ventilator. We have data that says it's it's funky data, but it's real data that says there's really two stages in unit ventilators at the middle school. One is one set is forty years old, one set is twenty five years. And in the facility project, there was a a look at what if we stop the unit ventilators and go rooftop? The rooftop unit ventilate rooftop unit that we were higher structural, that is beyond the scope of our plan. And it's okay. We looked at it and we said our priority is a quicker fix than a working on the roof fix. So the plan is to, to be completely honest, is to go as far as our CNA funds will take us, both on the roof and the unit ventilator. The funky data is that we have, and Kristen knows and Roger knows, at any moment, we could break up with unit ventilator that had a coil break. And flood the schools. It's happened three times, two and a half times, once we caught it. Uh in the last, you know, years, year or so. And those are the twenty to twenty five year old unit ventilator, not the forty year ventilators, which is. Well, you know, in some respect, that's great, but maybe they, you know, your father's home will feel is better. So our plan is to go as far as one point four million dollars takes us. Um with a commitment to watertight and watertight really does mean unit ventilators because we're not watertight when the coil coil breaks, we go. We don't know exactly how much though. Uh until we get the construction manager, B W report, Benwell, the architect's report to design, one of the things we're going to do. Once you start looking at the unit ventilators, the most efficient economical thing is also take a look at the casement and as well as a window. So in the way we say unit ventilators, it's not just the unit ventilator. It is the, we're gonna replace it with energy efficient glass and a new encasement. Uh in the in the efficiency better, the technology's better. So we are improving with working. Um system wide air conditioning in air um in these new unit ventilator. So we are like, your Christmas is looking at, our Christmas is trying to find out what's the mine, how much is this gonna cost? So um the commitment is watertight roof, watertight unit ventilators. One point four million dollars, Roger, it's a good number. And and this board to raise, to put that kind of money invested in the facilities over the last few years. Is an incredible achievement and we're going to reap the benefits of that in the next six to twelve months. So. How far will we go? We don't know. But in 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 AMI, we talked about a bit, we'll take a look at this. So the hope is that one point four million does phase one, the most leaky, the the most difficult. Kristen does share pictures regularly with me. Um so, um you know, do as much as we can in the in the most right prevalent leaks and and replace. And I'll be honest, at one point at a meeting, we were hoping we'd get all the unit ventilators done, but we went encasement, we went energy efficient glass. We didn't just go with a minimum because we want this to be a twenty year solution. And so it is possible, and I mean, I haven't talked too much about this, but it is conceivable. That if the the amount of money to replace, as management, we might need maybe an additional warrant for two hundred thousand dollars to finish. We don't know that yet. And I'm not there yet, but huge sense of urgency, watertight replaces many. So Roger and Kristen can sleep, we should worry about that next phone call. And we're able to do this because the board made a decision. Out of out of facility purgatory, which is we can now work on AMS. We couldn't have done this year. Because we weren't sure. Uh but that's our immediate plan. That will make a difference. It will make a difference. Now, if CW doesn't pass and we've obligated one point four million dollars of our CNA to AMS. Um it will be a significant amount of time meeting again with these wonderful people and figure out what is the next strategy. Um but really, right now, we are um in, Victoria will probably speak to it, but. A significantly high rank from the state about where we are in the in the ranking for building aid. It wa- it really was based on on the comparison of districts. It's clear that on the scorecard that Amy and Roger put together, the building is at least equal to any of them. That are above us. Because our score on certain demographics was sold on. So that really was evidence that this school needs to be focused. Not by me, not by Adam, not by Danwell, not by La Valley Brensinger, not by Jaybat. But by estate experts who evaluate schools and rent us because we were ranked higher than anyone. Um then with similar social economy. So we really, on merit of just a building project, I can say we're probably no more in all seriousness. But we had back together, we dropped because of Democrats, not because of the building.
No, actually, you had a good segue, Steve. I wanted to get into that part next. I don't know if Amy or Victoria, one of you wants to address it, but. The the results from, I call them, let me explain it. If someone would adjust this.
Uh I'll try and you can jump in. Um so like Steve said, we got exciting news, um showing underneath this legitimate. And it's demonstrated by an outside source, which is fantastic news uh for those of us who have been working on the project. Um to make sure that that we, what we knew was the situation is um appreciated by by people on the outside. Um the ranking was seven out of seventeen. Um there are a number of very expensive projects ahead of us. The process is um outlined on that, come back J F C dot F one three nine dot org. Um there's information there that explains the process that we go through. Basically, we don't know what funding is available or if we get any funding until July first. Um but this is how we know where our community is. Um the complete application, I feel like over the last several years, we've made a lot of slide presentations and we've put together things to share all these. Uh reasons that we have facility concerns. But the actual application was all throughout that website. And if you read through that, it's more extensive than. Than the presentation that I did last meeting um with a lot of slides. So that's out there. Um. Is there anything else that? I don't think so. I think we're um. We're eligible for up to sixteen million, um just based on our formula, thirty percent. We would have to back out some inevitable costs for um preschool and some other square footage, so. It it would likely be somewhat less than that, but probably in the range of thirteen to fifteen million. That we would be eligible for. So. Um but as Victoria said, we we won't know what the um local state budget will be putting forth for this until. Uh I think the last day of the fiscal year and then we won't know what other projects are passed in their towns and. If we would move up in the ranking um and potentially be eligible. But yes, certainly, the New Hampshire Department of Education. Sees that our building project is um very worthy and obviously receives um a high number of points. And as Steve said, we are on that. It's qualified from a large number of points based on our demographics. So the fact that we are so high. Um really does demonstrate that. And when we look at the other projects with similar demographics. We are um far outranking and so. And I I would wanna thank um Roger for all the work that he did. We. We worked on this over the summer for a couple of months and it was an extensive process. And I think the quality of our application um is quite good. And um so I think that that certainly helped to demonstrate the. For the community. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Miss Spacey and and um and Roger for all of the. Hours and hours that went into making this a really effective application. And I know that it's one thing that we um. Because of the way the process times and how often you're able to give a ask for aid and. Things that were beyond our control. Um and so. I was glad that we were able to set our focus ahead of time and really in be able to make that application as. The same that it was and to show quite clearly that that it. It's not just our opinion and 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 that we can go to voters and say, hey, we we have this, you know, here's where we are. It's not that we're gonna do it. It's not that. You know, you can trust that we did what we said we were gonna do and and the only way we could have done that was from all the work that we've been in. So thank you.
Any other questions for Amy or Victoria on that application process for the building state?
Okay, so the last thing we had on the agenda, I'm gonna throw a curveball into this one as well. Um I'm gonna turn it over to Steve. Uh we wanted to talk a little bit about solar panels tonight. Uh and I don't know that we were gonna have a vote necessarily on what we wanted to do for the solar, but uh it is something that we we put on. As a separate warrant article last year. Obviously, if the building failed, then the solar was going to fail regardless. Uh and. Remember, did solar pass or? Okay, I didn't think it did. It did better. It did, it did. So the building project had passed and solar had passed, we would have been able to look at doing solar projects on the on the two buildings. From last year's vote. So it is still our intent to to have some sort of solar focus, whether or not it's a warrant article this year is to be determined. Um but Steve had just a a new approach that we're looking at potentially. So we're gonna postpone any vote or any in-depth discussion on that. I know Jason, we're looking at some um some other schools in the state who are looking to become more energy neutral. So. I think this is part of a better, not a better, it's part of a longer strategy for us. So I'll let Steve explain it better than um if it's Steve's explain it better. Well, um Roger and Amy and I um sat and we we meet often and we we. Chatted about solar, where we are supporting this year on the warrant, things to do. And Roger and I both had the the same experience um with a owner's project manager. Uh who worked with both this our previous districts. And so the owner's project manager is someone of the higher order building projects, really represent you on the site. Experienced with, I think, thirty different building projects. And in my former district, we were um very tight on land. We didn't have much property. And it was a a a initiative of some committees in the community to take a look at solar on schools, solar on the roof. And the owner's project manager that we worked with um really asked us to look hard at um solar on roofs. Just because it it traffic, it it does inhibit um roof access and inhibits different um, you know, uh equipment on the roof. And frankly, you you're you're putting nails in roofs and and we've had all that problem. But of course, if schools are short on property. And it is the only way to get uh solar within um your energy savings, we get it. Uh but in discussion with Roger and Amy, um. The school district does own a significant property in Birch Park that may be right. When you go into Exeter High School. Uh Exeter High School built a solar farm on campus on the way in. And it used some of that time. And there are other schools that have done, um Interlakes High School is a solar farm, not solar on roof. Um and so I would just, based on the experience from Roger and I, owners project managers of the lots of building, I think the first look, is there a way to put solar farm on the ground? Before we start going on roofs. And and I had a meeting with a community member, then who discussed about the history of Birch Park and buying it. And so it is. Property owned by the school district. And and I don't know this and we haven't done this yet. Um but Roger's instinct, at least he felt it was worth exploring before we commit ourselves to putting solar on roofs, which is a smaller set of of tiles. And if schools do it very successfully, but when someone had lots of experience, encouraged us to look very hard. At other alternatives before we decide to go. And with Birch Park land owned, and in a year from now, we must say that is not an opportunity. We we love disco, by the way, big fan of disco. Would never wanna touch this call. But is there a way to expand on a place without going on roofs? Using that property that you own for a wonderful use to reduce the tax rate. Which was, when I met with a community member, I mean, there was still some frustration about that property, but showing the community that we can use this to reduce taxes. It may be winner winner chicken dinner. It may not be, but I I I would ask, and Roger would ask, that. If we could postpone the roof plan for one year, take a good effort, and he reached out, said there is a company that does this, goes lots and scopes and starts doing it. Great, now, you know, we're not gonna go here. We're just talking about exploration. I really think it is is a fiduciary and the best opportunity. If you could pause on the roof project and take a hard look. A year from now, it might be, look, at least we tried work. And 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 it isn't right, it's it's not the right property. But finding and a use of that property parallel with disco. To reduce taxes and do it, and and you might be able to get a lot more solar farms around roofs that we're gonna spend significant money to put. The face, at least in Amherst. I would just ask the board to consider that before we go and and people who do this. But at least it influenced my my password to really be very careful of that stuff on YouTube. That's just me, Bob.
So so not pause, fixing room, just pause.
The solar top.
Thank you, thank you.
No, no, you are committed to watertight. I don't wanna get. Roger and I don't want to withdraw a lot of some watertightness.
I have.
He is verge park. This really may be winner winner chicken.
I I I hope you said that every time I was talking about.
Hundred questions for Steve on that idea. I mean, yeah, I don't know if you have enough involvement tonight. They can still research it. We can discuss this in December as as we're starting to think about it. We had looked at the overall price tag of solar, Victoria. Hundred percent, I think somewhere just more than two million to do solar on the roofs. Obviously, we have no idea what the cost to do a a solar farm, but it's certainly something. Um I'm sure a conversation could be tied with the town as well. If we're, you know, looking to do something like that, I don't know that it's necessarily just a school district. So be great capacity if we want.
Yeah, so I think first of all, it's important to know that the building as designed would still support solar panels. So that doesn't change our our perspective on that. Um personally, I don't feel that when we, I don't feel that we have enough new information from last year about solar. To be able to come to the taxpayers and the residents with information at at this point, enough of a change. Um so I'm I'm comfortable with this. A question that I have is uh the use of a referendum on the ballot. Asking the residents if they want us to spend any funding time, anything like that. Um. To explore, non-voting, to explore solar further. I just, I wonder, I feel like we don't necessarily use the referendum. Is as much as um sending out surveys to people. And what better survey than residents on voting day?
Certainly not.
Idea, I don't know.
Let's look at that. We can talk about that in in summer and vote on that. That's where we wanna go. Just I'm not, I'm not. A building with enough information that night, if we can look into that, what that process would um inhale to be the first one to have been involved in four years. Yeah, I've never, I've never done that either. I'd love, love to learn about it. Not my, I'm kind of on ballot.
I think we've we've heard so much that residents want choice and want input. Um and I think there there have definitely been people who have um spoken with us in the last two years. Saying that they support the building, but they also want us to work on solar and work on the energy efficiency pieces and things. Um but at the same time, I think last year, the board kind of resisted, saying it wasn't a need, it was a want. Um so maybe seeing want the community to screw down.
All right, Amy, are you ready?
Sure.
I have one question. If we just stop, yeah, yeah, make sure to plug in.
Um so my only question, I'm totally fine laying. I'd rather have a solid project put forth with lots of information than a rush project that's gonna be demolished. Um. Is with applause in which, you know. Let's frame this positively. When the fifty four million dollars gets passed for the Clark Wilkins. Um does that change the systems that we have to consider and solar would be, just for that, you know, um. You know what I mean? Like the heating system and things like that, would that change any of that?
I don't imagine it's.
Yeah, I would imagine that it does, because I think if you put solar panels in a building like that, you're only putting that back into the electric system. You're not actually powering the building on it.
Yeah, because we're going to be bringing it and getting it. You had, it's under the job for days. You gotta have something, you know, keep, you know, lights on and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think I think most of those, I mean, probably, I think you misguided, I'm pretty sure, you can go back in the grid and access a rebate to your electric film. And it allows you to be new school because of the math involved and how mature it is and how would you use?
Can I jump in? One more thing about facilities. Um on voting day, the Amherst School Board had a table. Um up at Sirvegan so that we could engage with the community. Um and we were able to actually get four pages filled with residents who are interested in receiving more information about facilities or who are willing. To host neighborhood coffees. Um something that we had talked about, I I think as a board, but at least at the facility level. Um was instead of hosting, only hosting um public forums or listening sessions at our locations. Offering as a board to go in and speak with people um about the need on a more personal basis. Um so we will be reaching out to those people, um you know, coming going forward. Uh and if anybody is watching the meeting or. Reading the minutes afterward and would like to reach out to us, email us at any time.
Good job.
That's awesome. Yeah, it was, it was really exciting.
It's awesome.
It's always fun talking to the better public.
We don't wanna.
Fellow taxpayers.
All right, Amy.
All right.
I remember you, this is the second draft of our FY twenty four budget after subcommittee meetings. And we'll be able to talk about subcommittee inputs as we talk about the market when Amy goes through presentation.
Highlight of the night. Okay. So just as an executive summary of the total, but this for draft two, total budget from FY twenty three voted, operating budget is up four point one percent. And of that four point one percent, two point seven is the difference between the voted FY twenty three operating budgets and the FY twenty four default calculation. And one point four percent is the difference from the FY twenty four default calculation and FY twenty four proposed budget. And just as a reminder, in order to make the true comparison from operating budget to operating budget, we back out the six hundred and fifty thousand for the, which was the transfer to the capital reserve fund.
Just gonna hold my shoes. I know we share this. A few people.
So just a summary of the changes from draft one to draft two. And we have the. So the technology, we, in our budget subcommittee meetings, we, there was a lot of discussion in the technology subcommittee meeting on putting back the one-to-one laptop grade five program. So that's what that line represents. The SAU adjustment was based on the proportionment that was presented in draft two of the SAU budget. We did receive our workers' comp and unemployment comp from Primax. They provide us with FY twenty four guarantee of maximum rates. We also received our property liability from Primax, so that has been updated. We did have some salary and budget changes. And to quote Steve, we make a conscious effort to budget what we know. So we recently hired a custodian, so we were able to budget for that person accurately with their salary and benefits. We decided to remove the bus monitor. We did have a discussion of that in the subcommittee, subcommittee meeting, but decided that if if this did become a need, we could potentially fund that from the IDA grant. We're also in the midst of R and P for special ed transportation. And we had our first meeting, or we had a pre-meeting with those votes yesterday, and three firms that were, that came to that pre-meeting. And they, those firms all have included bus monitors in her vote. We had some corrections, the treasurer's item was budgeted incorrectly. Thank you, Mr. Canvito, for picking up on that. We had a an error in one of the admin salaries. There were some other location codes that needed to be moved. Based on some of the changes, we reduced the pool for the non-union employees. There were some corrections to the end of the class. So all of that ended up in that sixteen thousand, seven sixty seven. So the total change from one to two was just under one hundred and seventeen thousand. The majority of that being the one-to-one technology. And I I like to show this breakdown between of the budget between the three major funds, the general fund, food service, and grants. Just to, so folks understand that, you know, food service and grant expenditures are offset by revenue. So while food service is increasing, it is also offset by the revenue. So you have to budget both the expenditure and the revenue, but it's important to to know that there will be that offset. In addition, we have food service surplus from last year of over a hundred and sixty thousand that can be used if the revenue does not meet the demand of your projected expenditures. So in this draft, there is an increase of four point one percent, but point two of that is inserted into food service. And, oh, sorry. So at the December board meeting, we'll have a more complete picture of all of the revenue projections for the board. All right, so this is the slide where we break out the the different budgets by ways and means category. So during the budget subcommittee meetings, it became clear that it would be helpful to break out the budget a little differently than originally presented. So we isolated both admin and curriculum by school in an effort to show those expenditures more clearly. We also created a new category for grants to isolate those expenditures. As I said, they're also offset by corresponding revenue. We also moved the tech replacement equipment from curriculum to the tech category. We're gonna continue to look at software and equipment and make some decisions on how to code those in our system moving forward, probably for next year. I know it's confusing how the tech is spread out all across the different areas of the budget. And we definitely wanna make sure the information is presented clearly. And do you see the desire to have tech all in one place? But also wanna make sure we're not under representing the full cost in other departments. So for this year, we did create a separate file that included all tech in one budget, separate budget, and provided that in the budget file for waiting. And you can see that in the question, if anyone's interested, so you get a full picture of that. So tech is the biggest change from both FY twenty three to twenty four and for draft twenty two. And as I stated, this is primarily the one-to-one laptop program. Another driver of this budget is the need for server replacement that is shared by Clark Wilkins and the SAU. That server is marrying Everlight and the one that you just fired. Yeah.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
It was saying something highly unpopular. I, the one-to-one, we ever talk about that? I I know there was like, oh, is that something we're gonna discuss?
Yeah, I'm gonna discuss. It came up during the subcommittee meeting, it's something we've just discussed in the past. And it was one of those last in, first out type of items on the budget. So, you know, because it was, we were trying to shrink by a large dollar amount, so either pick out a large dollar and then nickel and dimes. So, but we will talk about it tonight, yeah.
Okay, good, I'll say unpopular.
It was, it was, it was put in as a request, but also really for the board to have the opportunity to talk about it. So transportation is another driver of the budget increase, primarily due to the expected increase in special ed transportation. The contract is expiring as of this year, and as I said, we're in the R and P process right now. We are expecting an increase in costs and based on the daily rate that is charged as well as population. And we also did budget for an increase in fuel cost. Change from draft one to draft two is primarily the removal of that bus monitor. School nutrition services, that includes the new staffing for the cook position, increases, you know, due to inflation and food, paper supplies, and replacing our current software that will allow the food service program to operate on one platform, linking our school and my school bus. It will definitely create some valuable efficiencies and it will also provide some good information for users or parents on allergens and other information. So the change really for draft one and draft two was mostly the workers' comp and unemployment comp. For facilities, that also includes the new staff and wages and an increase in our service contracts for preventive maintenance and utility cost increases that we're expecting. The major change from draft one to two was custodial overtime and summer health was significantly not budgeted, so that was an add. But we were able to make adjustments to one of those vacancies, as I said, with a recent hire that resulted in some benefit savings. Property liability was an add, and workers' comp and unemployment comp was an overall add as well. And services is primarily, is up primarily due to out of disparate costs, with services intuition, as we continue to be challenged by our existing space. Staffing was also adjusted to designate the needs of students. And we are actually reducing staff in both of our Wilkins and AMS. In addition, some staff at our Wilkins that were previously grant funded will need to be funded from the operating budget as we're not able to to budget for services that we are, that are already known. And the biggest change from draft one to draft two was we needed to correct, what we needed to move the specialized social work into this budget, it was in the wrong place in the tabs. And adjust for workers' comp and unemployment comp. For capital miscellaneous, this is where the SAU proportionment and non-union salary benefit increases are included. And the biggest change, but the SAU proportionment from a grace and that minor correction to the treasurer's. Admin and curriculum budgets, after discussion that several of the subcommittee meetings were reorganized by school. So they look a little different from draft one, draft two. The changes from FY twenty three to twenty four for Clark Wilkins admin is primarily due to co-curricular activities, I then benefits and hobby or eating costs. For Clark Wilkins curriculum, the change is mainly due to substitute budget increases, retirement budget, health insurance elections, and that reclass of tech from curriculum to tech. So we did take a hard look at long-term subs and substitute costs. We have seen an increase, and when we look at actual, we're just, we need to make sure that we have enough funds available. This past year or the prior year, we were able to use S R funds to offset some of those costs, but S R three, we need to finish up using those by September third. So those will be available as an option. So we just wanna make sure that we have funding for substitutes. And in our admin, there was a salary benefit correction, correction. And as curriculum, the biggest change is due to the reduction in staffing. And the biggest change from draft one to two is that salary adjustment and the recent hire and the reclass of the tech and what was up. Then grants to be isolated in this category, so there's no, and there's no change in the budget, but it's just helpful to to be able to see that as opposed to having it in, in curriculum and student services. All right, so this is the FY twenty four default calculation. So to, as a reminder, to make this calculation, we take the current year voted appropriation, which is the FY twenty three default calculation, and reduce it by the facilities capital reserve warrant, our, that passed last year, for six hundred and fifty thousand that was funded from the prior year fund balance. We adjust for student services, so up or down, those services are legally required. We adjust for contractually required salaries and benefits. We include the SAU assessment, food services included in the default as expenditures are offset by revenue and that does not affect the tax rate. We remove any one-time new equipment purchases. We adjust for an increase or decrease in debt service interest payments. And we included the property liability insurance increase. So the total change between the FY twenty three voted budget and the FY twenty three default is the one hundred and ninety thousand sixty dollars. And this shows the breakdown of the changes from the FY twenty four default calculation to the FY twenty four proposed budget draft two. So these are items that are not included in the default and therefore at risk if the budget does not pass. So included are the facility staffing, preventive maintenance contracts, regular ed transportation is not included in default, but will need to be funded regardless of whether the budget passes. Technology, restapping raises for non-union employees are all items that are at risk. The difference between the FY twenty four default and FY twenty four proposed is four hundred and forty three, six hundred thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars, or an increase of one point four percent. With the biggest change in the speculation from draft one to two is the inclusion of the laptop program, which goes to seventy thousand. So in summary, as I said, the budget is up four point one percent due primarily to this staffing increase based on increase enrollment, the educational focus that has been discussed by the superintendent. We had health office changes, facilities, food service. There was a net reduction in student services staffing. And there is an increase in need for student services for out of disparate intuition. Costs for transportation are expected to increase other in special ed transportation. We do have increases in regular transportation with the existing contract, and we expect fuel costs to continue. Increases in facilities, preventive maintenance, and rising costs for utilities. Our staff continues to work very hard to maintain our facility in terms of maintenance, planning, and repairs in accordance with Roger's famous five-year plan. So given what the facility is, and move on to review. So you all sort of started a conversation on this, but as you know, there is an existing capital needs analysis project and charting plan for both the Amherst and the Uden School of this group. And this chart shows the current balance in the capital reserve, which as you said, is around one point four, it's one point three six eight. A million, I know. So this shows the balance, the recommended contributions and withdrawals over the next five years. The plan is longer than that, but given that we're really still trying to, there's some unknowns that just put up the the next five years. And this is based on both the existing plan and the prioritization of the group and unit ventilator project that we're discussing. So as we were talking about, there's a public hearing to authorize the thing of the ARCA in here studying to determine the cost for that group and ventilator project at AMS. And as this has clearly been deemed a very high priority. So get out of the the one three six eight accounts for the cost of architectural and engineering fees as well as those FY twenty two projects that the board approved to be funded from the capital reserve. So we don't yet have the cost for the group and ventilator project, but in order to maintain what Roger really wanted to maintain, which is a hundred thousand dollars per building in the district, we would, in case of emergency, we would have one point six seven three million available for this project. Should the voters approve the recommended contribution of six hundred and five thousand from this year. So there are currently funds that could be used to start this project earlier, though, as soon as costs are known. For that required, it was FY twenty three, FY twenty four, for that one report in the test. The projects for FY twenty five to twenty eight are the existing projects in CNA and are either reviewed by Roger and the Amherst Building and Grounds Committee of J F A. And these are also subject to change based on whether the new school, school building project passes or not. So next step, so there's other considerations that the board will need to to deal with before we are ready for public hearing and deliberative. So the A D A, C B A is pending negotiations, the S S A, C B A is pending negotiations. We talked about the group and unit ventilator project. The board should decide whether to go with the planned contributions to five thousand. Go with the planned contributions to five thousand and whether on that out of time aside fund balance or review taxation. You all started the conversation on the solar. And then next month, we will be bringing forward our projections for FY twenty three on the time fund balance. Those are early, but I know we need to do it, nervous. And we will also be looking at like why twenty four revenue projections, so I do have estimated. At M Z and sweat from the D O B, so we'll put all that together and give you. Where we are looking in terms of revenue projections. We're trying to do this a little bit earlier, so we're gonna look at that and also have some estimates on tax impact.
Big one, tax rate.
Yeah, tax rates, Steve's excited. Next one. So here's a summary of the appropriations and the record warrant articles. So we'll have the bond. It sounds like we're probably putting off the solar warrant article in the budget, we'll have the A D A, C B A warrant article. It's pending negotiations. The special meeting as an option. If the C B A is defeated, the A S S A C B A. Also pending negotiations and special meaning option for that C B A as well. And then finally, the capital reserve contribution. So this is just a review process and where we are, so we've been presented with draft two. Tomorrow morning, I'll have the actual. Budget draft two in the budget work file, I'll have a variance report from draft one to draft two in there. I'll have a new default calculation and I'll have update an updated personnel file, so that will all be in. In the budget file tomorrow along with this presentation. And I think our, you all had a budget workshop scheduled for December sixth. And then there's a way the means meeting. December, we'll have our revenue information and we move on to public hearing presentation.
Thank you, Amy, thank you for all that work, I know there's a lot that goes into it, and what was a simple presentation, but it certainly didn't think about that, so. Any questions for Amy and anything that was up there before we dive in, I know the technology was the one that we wanted to get to with Jason as the biggest change, it would seem from. Version one, version two, but any questions for Amy or anything?
And the budget, the question submission form is open, so I know, you know, once we get draft two and there, you know, take a look and feel free to put some other questions in, so.
Good.
And and I'll send out an email once it's all in there to hold the board.
Perfect, thank you. So for Jason's sake, he's he's new to this part about the one-on-one computer program, and I said you had your thoughts on it, but we discussed this, let's say. Two years ago now, was when this conversation really took hold and it was. Essentially in the high school, so he can has one-on-one model where coming as a freshman, get a computer stage maybe for four years, and it's in a nutshell, that's what it is, so. Pitch breakers don't have that, we have more devices for the upper middle school, but we don't have that, so we've looked into doing it, and in years past. That fifty to sixty thousand dollar price range was a lot to add on, but after our meeting with the technology subcommittee. I don't believe Jeff was there for ways and means, I believe Duane was, and I believe Moosie was for ways and means. It was pretty consensus around the group, and I know Terry's been a big proponent of technology funds. And she's been the one that's been most vocal about those getting axed first. It was a big conversation point where the focus now is, you know, it's twenty twenty two, and we can't keep having lousy equipment and lack of equipment. And so if we really want to do this, you know, what is it going to take to get computers in its hands? One thing that is not on there that I think is more of a next year budget thing is what is that professional development that's going to be entailed? To make sure that these aren't just boxes for kids to play on and go and Google on. It's going to be something that's really built into the curriculum and they're more learning tools and just testing tools, so I know Steve and and Brian. And the administration are working on what those P D brands will be for future years on this. But for year one with seventy thousand dollar price tag, it's it's starting this program that is probably desperately needed, but is maybe technologically necessary for the day and age of it. Anything want to add to that, Terry?
Yeah, I'd like to add that couple of things, we've tried over the past several years to have. Be more proactive and less reactive. We've been building our capital fund because we know that we had things we needed to deal with, right, and we wanted to be proactive about it. This is something that we benchmark against from the high schoolness. So we didn't just say, hey, let's try this. We were always saying, hey, what's number and doing that we can learn from, what is something we can learn from. One of the the few benefits of our multi-district system is that we can have some learning from each other, and so this was one program. That's worked really well here and we wanted to limit it. Because we know that while in the undergrades, sharing can work a little bit better, we really, by fifth grade, you know, that those kids. Having something that they take ownership of and that goes with them through their time at the little school. And then we're always replenishing and that this is just part of what we do, right? And and families buy into it and we have work keys going to it, and we're not always scrambling to make sure we have enough for everybody. And so it really is trying to make it a sustainable cost. And and a program that just is still continuing from there, and so. It's it's trying to say, it's the reality where we are right now, right, and it's just being more proactive and and planning, so. And every year. We want it and every year when we have to start cutting, it's the one that gets cut. And it breaks my heart every time.
So any thoughts, Jason, so please say your unpopular thing.
Yeah, no, this is going to be super popular. And I'm biased, I'll admit that I'm biased. I guess my questions, and I'm not doubting that we've done all that work, I mean, we became there. Have we heard from the educators implementing this, is this something that they're looking for? Me, just because I'm not totally convinced on research that. Putting screens in front of kids in fifth grade improves outcomes. There's a lot of research that technology actually changes the way neurons connect with kids' brains. And I'm not sure that. And again, I'm biased, I would rather invest this money in human capital. I know sometimes technology can help with differentiation, it can help kids, potentially who are struggling to differentiate that curriculum a little bit, I'd rather have. Human beings do that and. Have a healthier synapse connection with the brain. So that's. So I know I'm sending boys on this, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm just not a big fan of kids that ten and eleven having so much. Technology, reliance on technology, I'd rather we rely on professionals that are paying to. Implement the curriculum as opposed to relying, that's just my bias again.
Can you hear from our administrators, maybe our our principals, just about how we use technology? Both in the lower grades and then how now having the lower middle school, the upper middle school, how that kind of works? Yeah, so I can talk about, I mean, it's been a bit of a stress this year. It's been a bit of a stress this year, I think with fifth grade not being able to be one-to-one, we had enough to be about two to one, just for computer. Which makes it a little tricky because they can only use them like in one class at a time, so the teachers have to do a lot of planning to be able to say, like, even if you wanted to use it for quick five or ten minute activity. In in stem class, you can't, it's being used in humanities, like, it's it's just tricky, so it definitely takes a lot of planning. Kind of like harkens back to the days of you had a gold and mobile computer ladder in your room to use it. And so I I think that's that's logistically not always awesome, it's just. Think there's a convenience factor for sure, being able to have have the devices when you need them, we see that in the integrated arts classes as well, with some of those places, they depend on computer use. For some of those things, in the seventh grade, I can, I can tell you an example, I met with a teacher today after an observation and I was viewing. The way they set up a digital notebook and they set up sort of all the resources the students would need, and so. The student could get those resources if they were out sick or if they lost something, and so being able to to have that all set up, she had this really cool digital science notebook and. Just almost, it was almost like something I would use as a teacher, sort of a plan of action of assignments and. And steps one, two, three, four, and standards were spelled out and you, can you do that on paper, you can. But I do think there's, there's just a level of of convenience with when you're out sick, it's just you're less, less missing a step. In that case, so I see those things there, I even see some of the activities, I was in a fifth grade classroom today. And I was working actually with one of our long-term substitutes, and she was talking about. How great it is because it gives kids a similar experience, the type of resources they're sharing, the slide presentation, the things that they're sharing out to kids. And I don't think it's, from my experience of being in the classrooms, and I've had the opportunity to be in a lot of classrooms really recently. It's not the kids like you're, they're not like that for the whole period, but it's being able to use it for quick bits of time to be able to add to the curriculum. So I'm seeing great things happening, I do think it is a stress if you don't have that available to you. Especially after teachers learned some really great tools during COVID when we were working remotely and. To be able to to have to kind of step back from that of like, oh, now now everybody has a device, is we. So I'd like to be able to see those things that they learned, there were, there were good things that came out of COVID when it came to instruction and new ways to learn and new ways to figure things out. And grade and assess and collaborate. And so I would like people to be able to use those skills instead of just like, well, we're not remote anymore, so we don't need this. So I I I see what you mean, and you know, there's a lot of screen time, I mean, you can see a lot of screen time at home too, my kids are no exception to that. Probably on screen right now, so you know, I I definitely, I I totally appreciate your point, but I also want to make sure that everybody has the resources that they need and I would support. Fully support, as Eva said in the past, professional development on tech integration best practices, sharing professional development, where teachers are sharing their best practices. You know, to make it as good as possible, because I don't think just supplying the devices is good enough. I just gonna add, if we, if we build school, we can start at sixth grade instead of fifth grade, if that makes you feel better. Another thing that we found really valuable too, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting again, but the ability of students to be able to do text, speech and speech to text. I think has been helpful for all kids, even kids who don't have it as an accommodation, as an accommodation or modification, that's something I think has been, it's like a little thing, but it definitely helps.
Yeah, I would just add, at Purple Kids, we made advancements, even even I joined the team as far as access to devices for teachers in classrooms. We were at a point where we had like one cart in the hallway that was shared amongst, you know, seven to ten teachers and was. Signing out on the clipboard and then trying to use that, which made it challenging for things like when you want to have a knee law. You know, completed in the two-week window across a building with, you know, five hundred kids. And we also lost the tech lab, so we we don't have a tech lab space, so you know, the technology is being used in the classrooms. We are not one device, one student at Clark Wilkins across all grade levels, and they came one level. We've had lots of conversations with their teachers about the use of iPads and a small group of those iPads and how it would supplement, you know, some of the. Claracy speech, so it's there in the classroom, they were doing centers, there was one center where our students first they grew, they use the iPad and they went on rapids, and then the four other centers, they were all engaged with parents playing game. So if you know, it's designed with supplement. Second, third and fourth grade, last year, we were able to move again a class set of devices, we're not one-to-one, we don't assign a device per student, but we have access to. Twenty-two devices in a classroom, right, so the teacher wanted to get the whole class on. Or ten minutes of making practice, right, starting to build some keyboard skills with students. That would be something they could engage on the full class, both the times travel thing at the beginning, especially at the beginning of the year, I I rarely see full-scale class use of the. Laptop in that format, it is similar to that first grade, we're using it offenders, some kids are using it as, you know, reading stories online, the brass kids or epic. Or storyline and other kids may be using it for things like access to laptop, which is targeted reading or mention. In a classroom, the third and fourth grade, you know, kind of like what Kristen shared, some of those practices from our teachers do use the mobile classroom with students, and they are creating things like. Indexing Google slides and submitting them and collaborating together, you know, it's not an all-day, everyday thing, but it is helpful for teachers to have access to. So then we're able to, you know, it doesn't need to be as scheduled and as planned and. Not another hurdle for teachers to to be able to get the devices to try something new out if they're if they're willing to do that.
Okay, so something that we've talked about in the past facilities is that Amherst Middle School. Has several classrooms that don't have permanent walls. So that means that our electrical outlets are only on a very short piece and then on the back wall. When I've been in the school, when I've been invited to come into the school, there have been every classroom. Most every classroom that has two of those movable walls will have multiple long extension cords. For the students to be able to plug in their laptops, I questioned if it's because the students aren't preparing and like and plugging in ahead of time. Some of that I think is true, but as I was told by a teacher, some of it is also just the quality of some laptops that just don't hold batteries for that long. Don't hold the charge. So something that that I think we need to think about with technology, we've talked about it briefly from a facility perspective, is that if we're not doing. The middle school complete renovation project, we need to think of other ways to be able to have electricity at different points in those classrooms, whether or not it's. You know, like a electric pole in a certain area or cooldowns, things like that, I think we need to be thinking about that in terms of our technology budget. At some point moving forward, not necessarily this year.
Any other comments on the viewers?
So I I tend to share some of Jason's unpopular bias, however. Recognize that we live in the world we live in, we were definitely the mean parents, we didn't pile phones until a certain age. But and I also like, I I share your belief in our staff. And I believe that with our staff and our administration, it won't become a tether, it won't become, you know, a a constant back and forth, it will be a tool, a resource. An important one in the modern world, so while I I certainly share some of that hesitation. I think ultimately we can use these effectively in our classrooms, so that is my hope with what we can do this month.
So I know we talked about the professional part of this, Steve, so I think obviously we we can't wait till next year to know what that plan is going to be, because this, I I know we're trying to budget this year. Is there a way between now and our December meeting that we can come up with an outline of what that would look like? Maybe what the best practices are in terms of time spent in front of these, truly, I'm overall concerned about springtime. But I do feel that this probably has some advantages for the twenty-first century, so knowing that, you know, you may not have a full. Detailed plan fleshed out, but I think an idea is what that would look like and what the, and certainly teacher opinions in the in that as well, so I think we have something we can look at, see what that long-term plan is going to be, maybe. More comfort to saying, yes, we know that this is not going to be just a squad box instead of a whole day, you don't think anybody wants that.
Absolutely, Christine talked about it, Krista and I, we really do appreciate Strand's choice and some opportunities, we we do have embedded skills and integration time is an issue there with. Figure some time and taking a look at other other fifth grades of one-on-one completely and see what it looks like. Go visit, just in full transparency. This was placed in the budget. When I went to the superintendent, interim superintendent budget, it was removed. It was removed because we, I as alluded to, one, there is research that says one to two. Is a good model for certain grades because it reduces distraction and promotes collaboration, so I, it's not great efficiency for me, I, it's not great efficiency for a lot of things. But one to two is not a technological disaster. And also completely, you know, Amy and I spent a lot of time talking about, and what I've learned in the last two weeks, and you'll hear this throughout from now all the way through the deliberative. Is successive defaults are significant on a. I didn't really understand how significant it was until I got a primer from my boss to the right, about. You know, locking in costs at two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-three, we're okay, the two thousand twenty-four and the highest utility cost, significant inflation. Very, very concerned about successive defaults. And I'm not just an optic person, but you know, realizing that twenty-five hundred people vote, fifty people show up to the deliberative. That and I'm under four, above four, I mean, I talked about it, I'm not, you know, yes, what's best for kids and bill, but what's best for kids is passing the budget. Because successive defaults will have a significant impact on operations morale and, as I said at one of the nights, the joy that I had at this part. And I don't remember what meeting I was at, but I talked about the lack of joy. And I have a sense of urgency, I really have a sense of urgency, I talked to Terry about this, I talked to others. Can this be an important piece for kids, yes. Are we in the worst situation I've ever seen, maybe for efficiency, but not for instruction in the classroom, one to two and stations in the big drive back in living. But three point, it's four, four point one now, and I'll be honest, Amy and I talked about this, I'm proud. And it's not because we're, you know, we're surrendering, I lack.
Uh, three point, it's four, it's four point one now. And I'll be honest, Amy and I talked about this about, and it's not because we're, you know, we're surrendering, I lack character integrity. It's about priorities and getting it passed. We have to pass this budget. And if 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 someone is isn't following this and says, oh, a four, a under four, I can handle. And I don't know, but I know I'm, I'm used to three, four hundred, five hundred people in a room talking about the budget. I'm not used to forty, fifty people in a room and then twenty-five hundred people. So optics, I think optics may matter. And if we can get this under four. And I also talked, and I'm not, just throw when you're driving around between now and December, have to do it, is it a separate order? Is this something that we have the budget at three point seven and this is really of interest for fifth grade? And I'm usually not there, you know what I'm saying? I'm going to be put in the budget and fight for it. But I was able to talk to everybody in my last district for one Saturday afternoon and I could sit there and talk to everybody in the room and talk about. Everybody's talking to me in a room with the deliberative. I don't know how much I've been talking anyway. But, you know what I mean? So we have to pass this budget. We have to. That's very significant for the education and my job. Thank you, Steve. That's, it's good insight there. I mean, yeah, okay. So, yes, Terry.
So two questions. I am not, yeah, separating out, uh, because I feel like rather than taking another year where we go, oh, not this year either, fine. I I'm actually okay with that idea. Um, because I think it does stand on its own and you leave in it or you don't. So I'd like to to explore what that would look like. And then I, this is the first time hearing of two to one. And while it's not everything I would want, I'd like to see what that cost would be and where that would put us. So maybe by next time we need, if you find out what two, I mean. One would assume you just take that in half, but I don't know if it's that easy.
So it's gonna be depending on the actual.
Yeah.
Devices that's worth that we have now. How many of those can be carried over into one, or one and two? And, and right, and we can, Chris and I can talk about how we can configure those numbers. There are some classes. Like just all this class, we need, we need them all. And that's one of the issues. So maybe it's a hybrid where we make sure we have twenty-two in there. And we, we purchase some more than we have in the budget. Cause I, um. Uh, you're, you're very accommodating to me, but I know that some of this stuff really makes your life difficult. I would really like to make your life less difficult.
How to be a team player.
You are. And I wouldn't get people to have less difficulty, but.
I'm with you.
Caddy talks about, he's one of my, you know, Caddy talks about two to one and it is about increased collaboration. And if you are sharing a device, you're less apt to go to Apple. You're less apt to go to shop on Amazon because someone else is. It's all by yourself. Yeah, and so that's the, that's the research behind one and two, especially early grades. But we can talk about that and, and um, as you drive around, think about this. And I just, that, that budget is very, very important to Amherst. Other items, any other questions for Amy Victoria?
Um, something that I think we need to talk about is our facilities. We talked about. Um, you know, obviously going forward, fifty-four million for a elementary school project. But we've also talked about how Steve and Roger are sometimes kept up at night about the state of our workforce. Um, if this building project were not to pass, we, I've heard from them that those, we knew that the portals were going to need to be replaced. We're hearing that, that, you know, we've now been talking about this for several years. We are really coming to that point where we're going to have to spend significant um, money. We're talking. Based on our numbers that we've worked with over the last few years, we're talking about one to five million. Um, to replace what we have. And or get more portals to accommodate the space that we are out of. Um, I mean.
Yeah, I, um, I mean, I was, one of our portals in the project have abilities to go up and, and I know it was part of the, when we got fired, buying portal that were. Being super late at that time, certain insurance, uh, company that we will, the portals are at end of life. And we're talking about. Accommodating um, several of our students and uh, working hard and continuing to um, address our current size of, and when. Would ask the board to consider additional portals in the building that's not. Um, right? The, the, the new building project has the space for those classrooms. The current building limits us without, we're using other projects, right? So if we're gonna add another third grade class to address class size number, if it's a principal, we have to get rid of the art room from the music room, right? So those decisions would, you know. These are, if you would, new space.
No, I'm, I'm with you. I get it. But I don't want. Board J F A to think, nothing unusual happened. A building project was proposed and turned down in the third. That was not unusual. That majority of it, very few have been approved for it. So that's not unusual. I think with the board, Roger and I had a discussion under that. What's your number? What do you mean? I said, what's the number of the vote that keeps us going on renovation versus stops and renovation, strike moments. And. You know, you're just messing around with the numbers. But the board's gonna have to take a look at the vote and see, are we getting closer? Or is it clear indication from this community that they're asking for a different alternative, including maintaining for the next twenty years and. Because, and, and that's, and, and I, I, I am not discouraged by last year's experience. I'm not. Um, I don't know. I, I know very few who passed the first year. Sometimes they pass the first year, like. People think where I came from passed the first year, it did pass the first year. We put it out there. We put the bright one out with you. That's crazy. This is what was coming. It passed the second. I'm not vocal, it passed this. Um, and so that's the discussion pose. I hope it passes, or I hope the clear indication is that we're getting closer, some more to do, some more advocacy, some more. But it's possible that we're going to get the message. That we have interest in maintaining the portals for the next couple. Because we cannot stay in facility purgatory by working forever. We cannot do that. It's not fair to the kids. It's not fair to the community. It's not fair to the leisure. It's not fair. It's just not. But what happened last year is not discouraging. It is not defeating. It is part of the process to new pantry. And it, and people pass after, you know, half of the time to us. And so I'm not discouraged at all. But we are gonna have to do the team leaves. Um, you have a date, whatever that date is, we're gonna wait the next day. Like we did this year. It was clear that they weren't going for eighty-five mil. Right? And the board adjusted, as you did. We're gonna make AMS and we're gonna do this. We're gonna have to meet. Any further questions on the part of the stuff? We do have that meeting December sixth as well. We're, uh, that will be the moment topic of tonight will be Claywork. There's more one. Yes. And we have some moments as well. I was just going to ask Jeff if he had a comment. Jeff is like, one hour. So ways and means, uh, ways and means met this week. Um, they were waiting for the second guy to the budget before they have any next steps or have any next conversations. So. Uh, they are not here tonight. So with that, I will open it up, I believe, for our last item agenda, which is our second. Uh, yeah, second public comment. So we have virtual and in-person. I will open it up for the in-person folks first to see if this is happening. Uh, we're in the non-public, are we willing to do that? Yeah, no. I don't have my retirement to look at and talk about. I can talk about retirement in public, they go to non-public. Good. And then um, staff. So, um, we are in, just, just update the board, we are in retirement season. Um, the retirement is very much, um. Um, the process is described uh, very comprehensively. It's honestly for. Pretty confusing for me, but with Amy around and others, with this team, we can get through that and help from Amy and Grant this week as well. Um, so we have some work to do in non-public regarding some choices that the board had regarding the retirement season. So we'll be talking about non-public and and then we'll work from there. Um, the staffing issue, one of the staff members, uh, one of the staff proposals signed with group. Or at least I believe if you did not provide me the information to bring her name forward, um, that is the V C B A physician. And the other physician, we'll talk about non-public proposal. That's the staffing. I'm ready. Okay. Thanks. Sorry about that. No, it's all right. So now I'll open it up for non-public. Anybody in person? Any comment or public comment? Excuse me.
Amy Hansen, Amherst resident. I just wanted to um, echo what Steve said about concerns about successive default budgets. Um, I've been here a long, long time. Um, and. It is. It is so much more than just the money on the tax bill. The long-term effects of having multiple successive defaults as well as not having teacher contrast is. It's hard to come back from. It takes many, many, many years to come from that. So I hope people look a little bit. Further down the road than just the amount. Per thousand on your test bill. Second thing I wanted to say was, um, I do appreciate the effort and time put into making the most out of the AMS building projects. Um, I have two students there. I have a sixth and an eighth grader and I worked there for many years as well and it's in dire need of work. Um, when your sixth grader is displaced for two weeks due to a flood and his biggest concern was, I'm so glad they didn't hand out their laptops yesterday. Because they would have been ruined. You know, that just, you know, not, not the other things like this. It's just. It's almost becoming normal for them and that concerns me. But. More disturbing was at the dinner table when my eighth grader said, oh, I got to see one of my old teachers today. And I said, I asked, I said, oh, where'd you see her? Well, she casually stated. There was sewage bubbling up from the floor, so we had to go a different way. And my son said, oh, that's what the smell was today. I thought that was the problem again. These are things that you don't want to have conversations with your children. And so I do appreciate the effort and time that is put into. Making the most of some of those projects and making the most out of some of that money to really make it worthwhile. And take care of some of those bigger projects. So just wanted to thank you for that. Thank you for the budget presentation and thanks for.
Nothing on. Yes, we're seeing nothing on Zoom at this point. Uh, for anybody raising their hands. No, come on. It's one of three deficiencies and I can't tell the difference. So now we have a, a hand raised for public comment. So, uh, Ms. Gascoigne, I will allow Steve Chamberlain to make you a panelist. As he does that, once you're in the panelist room, I will let you know. Uh, but I did just want to make one comment on Amy's comments. Uh, the sewage thing is not a technical problem. It's not a, a backflow of sewage. This has been more of what we think is sabotage at this point, if I'm correct. Kristen, we think it's, it's a sabotage effort. It's not a. We have sewage just randomly leaking in a building. So I just want parents that have heard that and may not have all the details that it's not, it's still lousy. Uh, it's probably another word that we could use to describe it, but um, it is not a sewer system that's vacuuming up on a daily basis without some assistance from some of the various characters. So. Uh, I would just get that out there that it's not a safety thing, Bill, some did execute, or some maybe it's teachers, staff members acting a little stupid, but.
If the building is almost fifty years old, the maintenance is fifty years old, right? And it all comes to one area that's what causes this. But. Yeah, ultimately there is some stuff being flushed out.
Yes.
We're working on it.
All right, Ms. Gascoigne, you will have three minutes when you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me?
We have you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Shannon Gascoigne, Amherst. I have been listening um, on and off to the meeting while shuttling kids. So. I apologize if I hit on a point that that you guys have already. Talked about and moved on, but I wanted to um, first um, say I really appreciate Jason Mike's comment on the one-to-one laptop program for fifth graders. Uh, I share his sentiments uh, there. But in addition to that, um, we have a real. Issue and safety issue as well with um, the current situation in some of those fifth grade classrooms. We don't have power outlets. To charge any of these um, laptops safely throughout the day. Uh, so. And and what I mean by safely is there's currently, you know, um. Cords with certain protectors running throughout the classroom because the walls don't have the power outlet. So as we're thinking about spending money. Um, to do that, you know, there needs to be a plan for, for how we're going to actually. Um, make those laptops work during the day for students. Um, that is something better than than what we have right now. So I just, um. I wanted to share that and and if you guys have, have mentioned that, um, you know, my apologies. Um, and I just also wanted to encourage the board to keep doing the, the good work and um. Uh, and to focus on doing uh, what's best for our students as is, you know, your charge stated by the New Hampshire School Board Association. So. Um, thank you all for that and and for what you're doing. It's not, it's not an easy task, especially uh, during the time of year. Um, so, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no other public comment or no other hands raised inside or virtually, I will take a motion to go into non-public for our discussion tonight. Uh, after that, we will have a uh, non-meeting as well, uh, just to update the board on our negotiations with both A E A and A S S A. Uh, our staffing unions in the schools. So I'll take a motion for non-public. I'll have a motion, uh, motion from Terry. Josh, can I get a second? Have a second? Okay. Uh, we do a roll call vote for non-public, starting with Terry.
Uh, being yes.
Why yes? Um, and yes.
Please, yes.
And God, here, yes, we are in non-public under RSA ninety-one, eight, three, uh, pair, two, A and C. Great. And with.